Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting. It is March 28, 2023, at 9:00 a.m., so this meeting is now called to order. If you all can please join me in a moment of silence.
... community is safe, accepted, supported, and affirmed. Thank you Supervisor Canepa for your ongoing support of the Pride Center and in the work that you are doing to ensure that our transgender community feels accepted here in our county. TDOV is a day meant to uplift transgender voices, empower transgender community members, celebrate the lives of our transgender trailblazers, and recognize the many, many accomplishments of our diverse transgender population in the face of adversity. Our community is strong, resilient, and nothing short of incredible. I am proud to be standing here today accompanied by all of my transgender and gender nonconforming siblings and our allies as we represent our diverse TGNC community residing here in this county. I hope that as we move forward and continue the work that we do, our county can continue to move forward in making our community safe, accepting, and empowering. Thank you so much.
Next, we have the proclamation declaring March 2023 as Women's History Month in San Joaquin County, and I would like to invite the Honorable Barbara A. Cronlin, the San Joaquin County Superior Court Judge, to the podium as I read the proclamation. Whereas at the request of the Women's History Project, a Sonoma, California organization, the United States Congress passed a resolution designated March 1987 as the first Women's History Month, highlighting the many contributions and achievements of women. And whereas women have been leaders in every movement for social change, including their own movement for suffrage and equal rights, the fight for emancipation, the struggle to organize labor unions, and the civil rights movement, as well as leading the call for peace and organizing to preserve the environment. And whereas Women's History Month is now commemorated throughout the nation and provides an opportunity for our constituents to focus attention on the historical role and accomplishments of the women of San Joaquin County, and for students in particular to benefit from an awareness of these contributions. And whereas by acknowledging and appreciating their contributions, we honor their legacy and empower future generations of women to work towards ending physical and sexual violence against women, discrimination and harassment in employment and education, and the relegation to poverty status of many women, and by advocating for the full participation of women in every arena, whether politics, government, business, science, technology, or academia, as well as equal access to all of the opportunities this great nation has to offer. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of San Joaquin County officially recognizes March 2023 as Women's History Month in San Joaquin County, and we urge all residents of our county to take this opportunity to reflect upon and appreciate the countless contributions that women have made to the history, culture, and economic growth of our community and our nation. Pass and adopt this 28th day of March 2023. Chairman Rickman?
Thanks, Rochelle, and thank you Judge for being here. You'd like to say a few words? Yes.
Pardon me for my voice, I've got a sinus infection. I am simply getting to do my job that I love because of so many women that came before me who fought the fight to get us our rights, to get us equality, to get us where we are today. So I am so fortunate and privileged. My mother worked in a male-dominated field over 30 years as a federal employee for McClellan Air Force Base. She was an electronics engineer. When I took the bench at age 30, 27 years ago, it was predominantly older white men on the bench, and I'm half East Indian. I learned two decades later, I was the first female South Asian-American judge appointed in California, state or federal bench. I didn't know that because back then diversity was not celebrated. In fact, it wasn't something you even put out there because sometimes there was more of a negative connotation than a positive connotation. So I am just very grateful. I thank you Chairman and members for having me come over today and for recognizing this historic time in our history where women really do have more equal rights than we ever have in history. And thank goodness, hopefully the progression continues till we are all inclusive and equal. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much Judge. We're going to have a hear from the board here real quick. Supervisor Ding, you'd like to say a few words?
One, congratulations. The biggest question I have, was it your memo that I was reading yesterday on the homeless courts?
Yes.
Yes, we will talk about that later, but congratulations on that as well. So I mean, it just, anyway, congratulations.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Patty?
Thank you Chairman, and thank you for being here and speaking out, and absolutely it is correct that in America, not only San Joaquin County, but State of California, but in America, that Constitution stands for opportunity and equality for all. That's a fantastic document, and we've lived up to and fulfilled it even greater now than any other time in America's history, and that's absolutely amazing. And we do stand for women's rights. I have a daughter, and of course I'm the son of a proud mother, and I'm very firm that women have a very special place. We understand that in our lives. We also understand that as women are making accolades in sports and how unfair it is that some boys compete against women in sports and take away those accolades. So we stand for equality and inclusion for all, but we also look for a fair playing field for all people so that women and young women are not deprived of the accolades and their success. So thank you for being here. We appreciate and respect all people that are coming in and the recognitions that they have. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Canepa?
Thank you for coming. I have a houseful of women that I totally adore, and if I didn't say that, I'd be in trouble. A houseful of educators, and I think it's important that we do fight that for wage equality and that the fight's not over, you know what I mean? So I think people are still discriminated against, and I think that we need to stay diligent and fix that so that we, as a community, can stand together. So thank you so much for coming, and I appreciate all the strong women that are contributing to our society. So thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Vice Chair?
Thank you Chairman. Judge, thank you for coming today and speaking on behalf of women. We have some amazing women that work for San Joaquin County, and throughout history, incredible things that women have done, and I'm honored to be surrounded by some incredible women on the sixth floor. They do an incredible job for us, and thank you for representing.
Thank you Vice Chair, and I'll wrap it up. And Judge, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You know, I appreciate it.
I appreciate it too.
And you know, one thing, as many of you know, you've been my mentor for when I had hair back in the day. And you know, all you've done for our community, like Supervisor Patty mentioned, or excuse me Supervisor Ding, our homeless courts, and our students at the law schools and the legal profession, and all you do for the community. You know, you talk about how other women or girls are look up to females and other women, but hey, as a man, I look up to you very much, and so thank you very much. And if you would, please just join me up here real quick, and the board can join me. We'll take a picture, and you can go back to work.
Okay.
All right, thank you everyone, and we're going to move on to our public comments consent items. Now's the time for public comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors that are not listed on the agenda and minutes, consent calendar, and close session items. Request that you fill out a comment form if you addressed a board in person, and there are some in the back of the room there. And there is a time limit of three minutes for these comments. Let me coordinate some of these comments that we have received. We received quite a few for our discussion item for number... For our veterans for number four, it's on the discussion items. So we'll hold off, and you can come at that time and speak on that item when it comes presented before the board. All right. All right, we'll start off with, I guess, Private Peoples of California.
Father and Son, the Holy Spirit, amen. Ave Maria, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners. Spread the effect of grace with thy flame of love over all humanity, now at the hour of our death. Amen. Board of Supervisors, I'm very pleased to be here today with the humble and contrite heart to bring to you the Private Peoples of California LLC. We will become an educational platform where people can learn to legislate and participate in their government. I am for a second time today motioning for an emergency work stoppages to all agreements with the State of California as it relates to the public health emergency. The program and procedural changes that have been enacted through the agreement are providing harm of an elevated risk to our people. The risk that has been provided is per the guidance of the CDPH. When the California Department of Public Health reiterated that the masking or face covering of its people was required, that created a confined space condition that violates the code of federal regulations. The confined space condition limits people's ability to operate in a normal space. By putting a mask on someone's face, you take away their available oxygen, you also create a noxious gas environment. Any person who has a health safety standard would understand that these constraints provided by the CDPH are violating a person's right to breathe. In addition, when you make someone become oxygen-deprived, they can't navigate the system. The ingress and egress of places of operation such as schools, different restaurants and places of business had limited egress and egress. That means that when a person went to enter a building, they could only exit a building. That causes a fire code violation because if a person now doesn't have enough oxygen, they can't breathe and they can't orientate themselves, they might go towards the inn, run back through the place of work, and go out the out. So we're creating a simultaneous operations issue here. The two codes have now conflicted. The main issue I have with this agreement is that the fact you have increased the harm on the youth and the adult population. The prescribed countermeasures have been found in federal court to violate, and such claims have been proceeded upon to have also included death. People have been given money by the federal government for death. I humbly ask for the work stoppage because you gentlemen care for our community. I've had the privilege of speaking with lots of people in the business and church communities, and you gentlemen are our best defense against these egregious acts. I see that you guys care about us, and you want to do what it is, and it's just contract law. It's not a regulation, and it's not a rule. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. We have Martha Snyder, and it's Veterans Services. Are you wanting to speak for the item number four? Okay, please.
Thank you Chairman Rickman and members of the board. I'm Martha Snyder. I'm the post-service officer for American Legion Carros Post 16. My topic today is still the Veterans Service Office, and I'm here today to say thank you. And before I go any further on that topic, I want to welcome the new board members because I've been gone for the last couple of months on family matters, and so I'm glad to be back and to see the new board members in place. On March 23, auxiliary member Mary Alt and I were given a very detailed tour of the Veterans Service Office at its new temporary location at West Lane and Swain, across from the King's Card Room. If you have not been by the facility to take the tour, I encourage you to do so. There are so many details that I could share with you this morning, but in three minutes, that's impossible. The one takeaway that I have in going to the facility and touring it is the need to really strive to increase the manning for our Veterans Service Office. That has been a concern in the past, and now it's even more of a concern. And why? That new location is allowing far more foot traffic to come in, both from the work net veterans that are going to that facility, as well as the accessibility for all veterans in the county to actually go put in claims. But with the staffing that they have right now and the way the facility is laid out, either somebody can answer the phones or somebody can work with a veteran on a claim. And due to the fact that we have people in part-time positions trying to get full-time positions, the fact that it takes two years to really get somebody fully qualified, it's just, we need to up the ante because the reality is San Joaquin County doesn't have what Stanislaus has, which is eight staff people to take care of, less veterans than what we have in San Joaquin County. And before I close, I want to make sure I recognize Board Member Ville Padua because he came to our post on Friday night and provided us with a great dinner. And I know each and every one of you board members are doing things to help veterans in our county individually that don't get recognized, so I'd also like to recognize your individual efforts in helping veterans in our county. But again, in this year moving forward, we did so much last year just to get that facility moved, and again, thank you so very, very much on behalf of the veterans in the county. Please, let's continue to work on getting the manning that we really desperately need to take care of.
Thank you.
of love over all humanity, now at the hour of our death. Amen. Board of Supervisors, I'm very pleased to be here today with a humble and contrite heart to bring to you the Private Peoples of California LLC. We will become an educational platform where people can learn to legislate and participate in their government. I am for a second time today motioning for an emergency work stoppages to all agreements with the state of California as it relates to the public health emergency. The program and procedural changes that have been enacted through the agreement are providing harm of an elevated risk to our people. The risk that has been provided is per the guidance of the CDPH. When the California Department of Public Health reiterated that the masking or face covering of its people was required, that created a confined space condition that violates the code of federal regulations. The confined space condition limits people's ability to operate in a normal space. By putting a mask on someone's face, you take away their available oxygen, you also create a noxious gas environment. Any person who has a health safety standard would understand that these constraints provided by the CDPH are violating a person's right to breathe. In addition, when you make someone become oxygen deprevent, they can't navigate the system. The ingress and egress of places of operations such as schools, different restaurants and places of business had limited egress and egress. That means that when a person went to enter a building, they could only exit a building. That causes a fire code violation because if a person now doesn't have enough oxygen, they can't breathe and they can't orientate themselves, they might go towards the inn, run back through the place of work and go out the out. So we're creating a simultaneous operations issue here. The two codes have now conflicted. The main issue I have with this agreement is that the fact you have increased the harm on the youth and the adult population. The prescribed countermeasures have been found in federal court to violate and such claims have been proceeded upon to have also included death. People have been given money by the federal government for death. I humbly ask for the work stoppage because you gentlemen care for our community. I've had the privilege of speaking with lots of people in the business and church communities and you gentlemen are our best defense against these egregious acts. I see that you guys care about us and you want to do what it is and it's just contract law. It's not a regulation and it's not a rule. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. We have Martha Snyder and it's for Veteran Services. Are you wanting to speak for the item number four? Okay, please.
Thank you Chairman Rick, the members of the board. I'm Martha Snyder. I'm the post service officer for American Legion Carros Post 16. My topic today is still the Veteran Service Office. And I'm here today to say thank you. And before I go any further on that topic, I want to welcome the new board members because I've been gone for the last couple of months on family matters. And so I'm glad to be back and to see the new board members in place. On March 23rd, Auxiliary member Mary Alt and I were given a very detailed tour of the Veteran Service Office at its new temporary location at West Lane and Swain across from the King's Card Room. If you have not been by the facility to take the tour, I encourage you to do so. There's so many details that I could share with you this morning, but in three minutes, that's impossible. The one takeaway that I have in going to the facility and touring it is the need to really strive to increase the manning for our Veteran Service Office. That has been a concern in the past and now it's even more of a concern. And why? That new location is allowing far more foot traffic to come in, both from the work net veterans that are going to that facility, as well as the accessibility for all veterans in the county to actually go put in claims. But with the staffing that they have right now and the way the facility is laid out, either somebody can answer the phones or somebody can work with a veteran on a claim. And due to the fact that we have people in part-time positions trying to get full-time positions, the fact that it takes two years to really get somebody fully qualified, it's just we need to up the ante because the reality is San Joaquin County doesn't have what Stanislaus has, which is eight staff people to take care of, less veterans than what we have in San Joaquin County. And before I close, I want to make sure I recognize Board Member Will Padua because he came to our post on Friday night and provided us with a great dinner. And I know each and every one of you board members are doing things to help veterans in our county individually that don't get recognized. So I'd also like to recognize your individual efforts in helping veterans in our county. But again, in this year moving forward, we did so much last year just to get that facility moved. And again, thank you so very, very much on behalf of the veterans in the county. Please, let's continue to work on getting the manning that we really desperately need to take care of.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors.
Good morning.
My name is Sreka Sheker and I'm a resident of Mountain House. Today, I'm here to represent the Mountain House residents for a concern regarding the newly planned South Community Park development. So we got to know that the park size has been downsized from the original 32 acres by around nine acres owing to financial deficit. So we think this is an important concern for the community and it reflects negatively on part of the community. So I have few reasons to say why this is an important concern for us. For a growing community of Mountain House with lot of young families and many school-aged kids, parks are the breeding grounds of health and happiness. This is where our kids learn their life skills, form lifelong friendships and partnerships. In the time and age when technology is empowering our everyday, overpowering our everyday lives, parks are needed to improve our physical and mental well-being across all ages. Parks provide plenty of green space, improving air quality, provide recreational opportunity for all ages. So we request that the board reconsider this decision and help to preserve the nine acres and find alternate source of funding to address the financial deficit. We are in agreement with the current plan that the CST has put in place to construct 22 acres. At this point, we request that the nine acres be solely preserved for future park expansion to keep up with the future residential and business needs along the south side of Mountain House. So the South Community Park can follow the Central Park model of incremental development using the funds from the local businesses. So we can prioritize and invest in facilities that are financially viable at this point, taking into consideration the community survey from all the residents of Mountain House. We residents have run a signature campaign for this cause and more than 600 families have stood for this cause and supported us. So we would like to submit this petition to the county on behalf of all residents. We look forward to know the procedure for the same. So this can, you know, bring to your attention. So we are here to partner with CST and county to make this a win-win and ensure that the community interest and well-being is taken into consideration. Thank you again for your attention.
All right, thank you. Joe Ferrari?
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
California Elections Code Section 19205 says, and I quote, "A voting system shall comply with all the following. Subdivision A: No part of the voting system shall be connected to the internet at any time. Subdivision B: No part of the voting system shall electronically receive or transmit electronic data through an exterior communication network, including the public telephone system, if the communication originates from or terminates at a polling place, satellite location, or counting center. C: No part of the voting system shall receive or transmit wireless communications or wireless data transfers. So, wouldn't this voting system include the electronic poll pads used during the election process? Even our ROV acknowledged this fact on the November 2022 election night during a tour given to observers after 8:00 PM tabulating began." I asked her that question in front of my friend. She didn't deny it. What was also admitted was that the poll pad system was evolved in sending data to the Secretary of State. You might ask, how is this done? Answer: electronically, through the internet. How else? Illegal. Was the poll pad being knowingly or unknowingly connected to our everything is hackable but secure Hart Windows 7 operated kiosk have a federally uncertified tabulating system? Certainly looks this way. I might add that it is in the news headlines that the election management system, B Pro No-Link, which is the company's name, which was recently used by Santa Clara County, is allegedly connected to the internet, not certified, and is able to backdate election results. And yes, this system uses poll pads. For example, hot off the press, Gateway Pundit just reported yesterday that the entire B Pro No-Link election system in New Mexico is vulnerable to manipulation by uncertified custom piece of hardware called Service Total Vote. Two of these three problems apply to our county's voting system. We have a Windows 7 Anything Is Hackable system that is uncertified, in this case federally. This is one reason why we need our election, our citizens' election committee and why it must be a permanent committee. We must make sure these problems are mitigated and we need to remain vigilant. So it's not just for trust. And it's one of them, and it's one of many reasons besides the Khan affair that the Voters Choice Act must not be pursued. We don't want an election under one centralized system that can be completely accessed by bad actors. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Move on to Carla.
Thank you Chairman Rick.
Good morning.
Members of the board. You didn't attempt the last name this time, huh? That's okay. Everybody mispronounces it. So I'm Carla Huni and I'm a citizen of San Joaquin County. I'm urging the board to have the San Joaquin County Citizens Advisory Committee up and running as soon as possible and that the guidelines are able to discuss goals and solutions within themselves and to be able to ask knowledgeable people to help them. And also to go to the public and ask what their concerns are. I think that's very important. The committee needs to look at the election process from when the ballots go out all the way to when it's getting ready to be sent to the Secretary of State. So they're knowledgeable on how it works. I would like the ballot to be treated kind of like a dollar bill. When a dollar bill is printed until it's destruction, the federal government can actually track it if they want to. My concern is on ballots, there is no markings. So you have no idea when it gets counted once, whether it gets counted again. There should be some kind of watermark or something that you can tell that it's already been counted, so it's not counted again. I think that would help part of the process. The chain of command has been broken, I've talked about this before, between the drop boxes and the mail. Once you put that envelope in that, that has all your private information on the outside of the envelope, there is no chain of command. It's just sitting there, especially the drop boxes. There's no cameras on them, there's no security for them, they're just sitting there and most of them are not even chained up. Let's see. Lost my place here. The other thing is, has come to mind, on mail-in ballots, it used to be they were postmarked. They're not anymore. I don't know why, but they're not. So ballots, you have no idea when they're received. And then also when the mail-in ballots are transported from the warehouse down by the airport to here, how many people are in the car? Where's the chain of command on that? Where are the cameras? Once a ballot, no, no, I talked about that anyway. So just some of my thoughts on that. I know the committee is in the works and I appreciate that, but just some other ideas for it. So thank you.
All right, thank you. We have Med Rodriguez, but that's for discussion item number four, correct? Oh, right, for public comment? Okay, please.
Good morning, Board. I'm here today to talk to you about Dignity Zalco, a veterans' facility here in Stockton that was closed down on February 10th, 2023. This veteran facility housed anywhere from 23 to 33 veterans at a time. It offered housing, meals, mental health services, as well as wraparound services, which is veteran transportation to and from appointments. I know you guys seen the news. These veterans are without a place that they called home. Some are in Sacramento, Modesto, and back on the streets. So we no longer have a facility within San Joaquin for our veterans. This is embarrassing for our county, especially considering that our mayor is a veteran. I feel like this is a very embarrassing thing. We accepted all veterans despite their background. And the funding that they received from the VA was never enough. It barely covered the expenses of the building and the food and the employees. But I feel like our county should have been doing more. So I see when everybody sits here and says that they care about the veterans, you guys need to be doing more for the veterans and you guys need to be doing better for them. And they need to be off the streets and back in a facility here in San Joaquin County.
All right, thank you. Mary Alt?
I was going to wait until they spoke first before I did. My name is Mary Alt. I'm from the Carros Post 16, American Legion Auxiliary. I've been a member for them, with them for about maybe eight to 10 years. The qualifications for being in the American Legion Auxiliary is to have a veteran in the family. My husband is a Vietnam, United States Marine Corps Vietnam veteran, two Purple Hearts. So my heart is deep into the veterans, Carros Post 16, and the mission that we have to serve our veterans. And I would like to see the American Rescue Plan Act fund benefit Carros Post 16. We need that to serve the veteran community and to keep the post going for our younger vets and our future veterans and their families and descendants. Having this funding bestowed upon Carros Post would mean keeping the post safe and architecturally maintained with improvements. And that's basically all I had to say, to advocate for that funding for Carros Post 16, Veterans Post. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Kevin, is it Timmy? Timmy. And just to be aware though, if you are going to speak on item number four, this would be your chance to do it. You won't be able to speak again on that item. So if you want to do it now, by all means, but if you want to wait, you know, please do so when the item comes up.
Good morning Supervisors. Thank you very much for seeing us.
Good morning.
Just wanted to start off by saying thank you for everything you guys do for veterans. I know you guys do a lot behind the scenes that most of us don't see. When you join the military, you become part of a new family. And when you start your training, you go through all the BS stuff. Then, once you get out of the BS stuff, first thing they teach you is medical. Because you can't help anyone else if you can't help yourself or the soldiers near you. And that's kind of what this act is kind of going to be helping us, is our building has been put off for so long because, not for not wanting to do it, but because all of our efforts and money and things like that have gone towards helping other veterans in our community. And the problem is now the bandages we put on our buildings are starting to fall apart. And the act, the money that's going to be going towards it is going to help us repair that building to a spot where some of the veterans that are members there that have left because, main thing is ADA accessibility to our building is rather low. And we have 80% of our members are above 65 and over 90% of us, even from the recent Iraq war, have issues, medical issues that are allowing us not, you know, be able to enter our building or get to areas of the building that we usually conduct our business in. And I see that there are only six organizations on here, not just our building, but as you can see, there are many other veterans in here from other areas that need this as well. And I'm pretty sure they can attest to exactly what I'm talking about.
First of all, I wanted to thank Galfield for your support and of course Paul Cantaf for your pass support and Tom Patty. Anyway, as our commander was talking about, we do have to upgrade our whole post, our parking. We need lighting out there. We need to, need handicap accessibility, both for upstairs and downstairs and repaint our, not repaint, but our plumbing. So the post is in dire need of an upgrade. And I would, I hope you guys do pass that American Rescue Plan. We definitely need your support. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you both. So there's no Rick Demas? Rick? Oh, you just did? All right. Dominic Ghulie?
Yeah, if it pleases the board, my name is Dominic Ghulie, professional engineer. I've been sending you a lot of stuff about the San Joaquin Area Flood Control Agency proposed assessment coming up. I received in the mail this expensive flyer here, as did many others. And I want to thank the veterans who all just stayed at the American Legion Post, because I put them in the letter that I sent to you last week. They'll be paying for their 2.7 acres of land, $3,146, towards this assessment. Now, I don't know why a public agency can send out campaign material like this pushing for a tax, significant tax, and include on it many false statements, which I gave to you here. I put in my own statements. It says, "Stockton's not prepared to prevent floods." Well, we are. We're doing fine during this flood in central Stockton. We have reclamation districts that maintain all of our levees. You know, they don't really tell you all, I mean, nothing in this paperwork tells you about the Smith Canal Gate project, which the Carros Post has been paying for since 2013. It's not done yet. Now it's going to get transferred to all the other people are going to be paying for it, in spite of the fact that it has a significant exposure to litigation pending right now. You know, the pictures that they show you here, this one here, they call it a levee. It's not a levee. This is a walnut orchard that drained off and wiped out the road. This canal here did not cause this damage. This spot on the Calaveras River was damaged due to the storms. No, in July, I sent an email to the appropriate authorities and showed them a picture of what it looked like because the blackberries had burned from the homeless people. That's why it was damaged because it hasn't been maintained. Now, it's a PL 8499 levee. So we're going to wait until the Corps of Engineers gets around time to fixing it. Last time they fixed a section a lot smaller than this down on the west side of the I-5, it cost over $5 million. So this stuff here requires maintenance. As I told you in that last letter, they absolutely can split the ballots into maintenance and capital improvements. Capital improvements will do nothing to prepare fixing this slope right here, okay? They're going to put a cutoff wall in here. The last thing I put in your thing is the information from the Corps of Engineers feasibility study, their budget, and then what the state of California. The Calaveras River, according to the cadence of the state of California and our engineers, only needs one small section of the Calaveras River. But this campaign flyers is going to fund fixing, putting cutoff walls all along of it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ryder Ford?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I am here today to address the misappropriated funds that are being allocated to continue the COVID-19 propaganda. Why are you wasting another $2 million to do testing and advertising? The truth is out. The tests don't work. And in fact, they have been proven to give false positives all along. But as it appears not, one of you has listened, as you continue to push testing clearly without doing the research. You know who has done the research? My mom and I, along with thousands of other constituents in this county. So please stop the fear mongering. What is with all the money that is being allocated for the airport transportation? It's listed as being budged. It's listed as being budgeted under the COVID aid relief. And I may only be 11, but I don't understand how buying vehicles to get to the airport helps anyone affected by this scam, Denick. Here's an idea. Why don't you take that money and actually help those who have lost everything due to business closures or help families like mine fly resources we need to homeschool? Create homeschool grants so we didn't have to come out of pocket to finance the same resources being funded by my parents' tax dollars given away at the public schools. As I mentioned, I may only be 11, but I am sure I can come up with a better way to use all that money to help those in need. And one last thing, please, don't jump on the devil's bandwagon to promote this trans agenda. As a kid, I've already have to see this enough everywhere I go, on the TV, in stores, amongst the crowds. Why don't we put God first? Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Leila Ford?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I would like to remind you, one nation under God. Let's keep it that way. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. The Rochelle, I'm sorry, I can't read the last name, Lor? Ford? Cool, all right.
I am here today to address a few concerns that I have. First, whose call was it to terminate the written comments? I'm not sure if you all realize, but it's very expensive and time consuming for most of us to attend these meetings. And cutting off written comments silences your constituents. Was that the goal? I'd like to remind you that your, that your title is, is that of a public servant. That means that you work for us. What is going on with all these misappropriated funds being allocated by you all for the COVID charade that seems to still be going strong? Not sure if you guys missed the memo, but it's been proven that COVID testing did not work and has been providing false positives all along. And now, three years later, we have a rapidly increasing number of permanently disabled vaccine injured people. And even worse, hundreds of thousands who will never see their families because they are dead. Sorry, I just lost someone close. And now you want to allocate $2 million more dollars for COVID testing and advertising for what? Then to top it all off, you want to allocate COVID fund relief to buy vehicles to chauffeur, I'm assuming you guys, to the airport? That money should go to families who have been impacted by the vaccine, those permanently disabled, or better yet, help pay to bury the loved ones lost from this sudden death epidemic we now face. My final question is, whose idea was it to make March 31st Transgender Day? What a disgusting embarrassment for you all, jumping on this progressive radical trans ideology bandwagon. I cannot believe that you guys sit here and support the mutilation of our children, giving them hormone blockers, permanently sterilizing them. This state and this country is going to hell. I mean, I was in disbelief when SB 107 passed, allowing for our state to be a sanctuary state for transgender kids, using our tax dollars to permanently mutilate children. We are in a spiritual warfare and with this declaration, you all have clearly chosen your side. How do you just obliterate God and celebrate these falsehoods? Growing up, I was a tomboy. I hated dresses. I played with boys and I swore I'd never wear a dress. Here I stand before you 30 years later, a proud, beautiful woman and mother of two. Thankful I did not grow up in this world, or I'd probably have been fed hormone blockers, had my breasts removed and possibly my forearm removed to re, and restitch to my genitals. You need to wake up and stand up for this, for our county. It's bad enough schools have now adopted and internalized these falsehoods in the name of equality. My question to you is, why is it illegal for people to discuss sex in the workplace amongst adults, yet it's celebrated and pushed in schools? The devil is here and walking amongst us and those who pushes agendas. The only way forward is to stop pushing these lies, stand firmly in the truth of our Creator. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Melanie Knott?
That little guy knew where the button was. I, I didn't know it was there. Awesome. Election integrity. "It is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, to be grateful for His benefits, and humbly implore His protection and favor." That's a quote by George Washington. Another quote by Samuel Adams. "The liberties of our country, the freedom of our civil constitution are worth defending against all hazards. It is our duty to defend them against all attacks." "Our county elections have been replaced by selections and are unsecure. There is foreign interference. The voting machines are vulnerable to hacking and early in mail-in ballots disenfranchise legal eligible voters." I know, you've heard me say that repeatedly. "I'm a concerned citizen and a constituent of San Joaquin County, giving a voice to a serious matter that affects many San Joaquin residents who may not be aware that their sacred right to vote is under attack." Again, you might ask me, where's the evidence? Well, we've had a lot of evidence that's come about. Here in the county, we've had one incident. And I don't know, it just doesn't seem to be enough concern. Doesn't need to, it doesn't, it's not something that's taken seriously is what I see. And I think it needs to be taken more seriously. The county, we need to ensure our elections are transparent and free from fraud. There, I suggest that there should be audits for our elections. But when I bring up the matter of an audit, it's something that's foreign because there's certain people who are saying that the heart intercivic, they don't allow for audits. Folks, we've got to get back to paper ballots. We've got to get back to no machines. We've got to get back to making sure that we have secure elections. And I appreciate the work that this board is doing to forcefully, not forcefully, to engage our citizens in this committee. That needs to happen. They need to have power. They need to have authority. They need to have a bite. This is real and it's serious and it's going on in our county and something needs to be done about it. I'll close with this. Clean up the voter rolls, get rid of the machines, oppose the Voters Choice Act. And thank you, gentlemen, for your time. God bless you all.
All right, thank you. All right, that's all the public comment forums I have. Anybody else wishing to address the board on a non-agendarian? And none, we'll move on to approval of minutes. And these are the minutes from Board of Supervisors regular meeting on February 28th, 2023. If there's no amendments or anything, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second?
If you could vote, please. It was adopted for zero with Supervisor Patty absent. And before we move on to consent, I just want to get approval from the board. We're going to move closed session till the very end of the meeting. If that's okay. If anybody has any objections, let me know. If not, we'll move it to the end. All right, for consent items one through 26, any member of the board wishing to pull any items?
Just four.
I'd like to pull 10, 11.
13 and 14.
I'm sorry, Supervisor, would you say that again?
10, 11, 13, 14.
10, 11, 13 and 14. Anyone else? Number four got pulled. And at the request of our CAO, we're going to be pulling item 15 also.
And Chair, I'll be asking for a separate vote on that one because of a personnel change. Thank you.
Will do. When we get to that here. All right. So we have four, 10, 11, 13, 14 and five. We'll start out with Supervisor Canepa. You pulled number four. Want to take it away?
Yeah, no, it was just the part about the Levine Act. If you could go into a little more specific, is it specific? Okay, be more specific. Sorry, I'm not getting that word out today. And how that affects it because it was just kind of vague in there and how that affects us. I don't know who wants to answer that one, but it's kind of a pretty important thing.
Yeah, through the chair, Supervisor Canepa, last year, the Levine Act was passed. It makes, it amends existing law and makes it now applicable to local officials like yourselves and members of the Board of Supervisors. It requires that a board member who has received a campaign contribution totaling more than $250 as of January 1, 2023, from certain individuals, and I'll go into that in a second, to disclose that you've received that contribution in writing or at a meeting. The individuals who the act is concerned about have what they say is a party. So it's anybody who's going to come before this board to receive a license, a franchise, a permit, or be awarded a contract. There are some exceptions for contracts. It excludes contracts that have been competitively bid and it excludes employment contracts. Somebody who, for example, comes to this board via the planning commission process and now wants the board to take some action. If they have given a contribution, it would require you to disclose it and it requires them, the party or participant, to disclose that as well. And in addition to disclosing, you will have to recuse yourself from the vote. The Levine Act does provide a method for you to cure if there, if the decision has not been made, you can cure by returning the contribution within 30 days before you have to consider the matter. The act also says that for a period of time after you've made a decision, you have to disclose a contribution that you receive after the fact. And it says you can cure that by giving the contribution back within 14 days.
Okay, so like, like in an election cycle, theoretically, three people are up for election, right? So if somebody contributes over $250 to those three people, there, there's a method. If you have just two people voting on something, it's a lottery, I guess, or to allow one person back in. I mean, I'm just saying for, you know, quorum after the fact. I mean, so if it's Miguel and I are left and there's two people and three people are having to recuse. I was just kind of curious to see the effects of that. And I, I kind of read parts of it, but it's not very clear.
Yeah, the, the cure, the cure is the only way. So you gotta, if you want to participate, you have to return the contribution.
No, I'm just saying who votes? If you're down to, if three people have to recuse themselves because they've taken some type of form, then who? You know what I mean? If it's he and I, how do you, unless we form consensus, if he votes one way and I vote another way, then?
Then it doesn't move forward.
Doesn't move forward. Okay. Okay. And then there was just a lot of travel stuff and I understand going through these, that you find new stuff. Why is there so much redaction this year in travel? And is there different policies that have been taken that, from the state level that need to clarify? I mean, it's pretty intense. If you need to show your map on which way you're going and I mean, it's, why would you want to travel and try to get reimbursement? Because it's so, it seems so difficult to get reimbursement.
Sure. Through the chair, Supervisor Canepa, my name is Josh Bronco. I'm the CEO analyst who worked on this item for you. And the, the reason for the extensive revisions in the travel policy, a lot of it was due to combining or consolidating previous memos from CAO Auditor Controller into one document. So we have one place that has all of the rules and regulations and guidelines on this topic. So that's a lot of the, the reason for, for the edits that you're seeing. In regards to the mileage, the thought, the attempt here, this was a suggestion from one of our departments. Currently, the way our policy is written, it creates an opportunity for people to be reimbursed for mileage that they're not actually driving. If they live closer to where their training or travel destination is than their work site, they're going to be, again, reimbursed for mileage that they haven't driven. So the, the revision, there is a little more administrative overhead, but we feel it's appropriate because it's going to be saving the county money and it's going to be using those public funds more appropriately.
Okay. I mean, and I get that I want obviously oversight. But I mean, you don't want oversight to where people, you know what I mean? Don't go, start going places because of the headache of having to, you know what I mean? Do too much to be able to go or use their car or figure out a way to get there to, you know what I mean? Whether professional development or some other aspect that the county benefits. So I mean, I get it for oversight. I was just curious to, you know, why there's so much at just this time. It just seemed kind of odd to me. So thank you for your response.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Ding?
I've got two comments. Josh, the, the one thing in that, in the reimbursement thing I read that just gives me a little concern and maybe I didn't read it right, but it was that being a local businessman, the purchases can't be made at retail anymore. It has to be done online. And unless you want to live in the world full of Coscos and McDonald's, I would like you to look at that. So there was one little section you couldn't go direct, directly to the store and pick it. You had to do your order online. So just keep that in the back of your mind when you're looking at and say, how does this affect Main Street?
Yes, sir.
And then on the Levine Act, this is all one big lump of thing here. So what I, the, the Levine Act is, is under court challenge right now by the California Restaurant Association, the BIA and some other groups. You, you know where we're at a, they were, they were seeking a hold on the Levine Act?
Aye.
Okay. My other question is, I'm not really sure why this is, this is regulated by the FPPC, which is a statewide organization, not really sure why this is on our agenda. And Supervisor Canepa's question about quorum, there is another alternative too. And that is an elected official opposes this because this was designed by, let me tell you what the real purpose of the Levine Act is. It's a bunch of incumbents that pass this for job security. It's a, it's an incumbent protection plan because if local officials can't, you know, raise the money, the guys at the state will never get challenged. They never do anything election unless it benefits them and that's why it's there. The other option in this is you go ahead and vote, you take the damn contribution, you go to the FPPC and you argue your case. You probably win because it's unconstitutional. I don't understand, it's, it's by the state, why, why is it even on our agenda?
It's on your agenda because there is an impact to the county. If you, if you, if there's no disclosure, our county contracts become void. And so we just wanted to put it on, make it a part of our manual so our department heads can flag a potential contract that may be subject to the Levine Act. So you know in advance, so you can take whatever necessary steps you need to take and so that we can get contracts and other things approved by this board.
Appreciate your response. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Patty?
Thank you, Chairman. And through the chair, County Council, wouldn't it be appropriate then, since there's a pending litigation? If we accept, we're basically ratifying a county? Or would, or is there a delineation pending the legal outcome?
It is in effect until it is overturned. So you have a policy in place that is consistent with the current law and that's perfectly okay.
Okay, shouldn't we say that because if it, if it is overturned in the next two or three months, are we going to re-agendize this?
We can take it out the manual, absolutely.
Okay, but wouldn't it be easier just to have in the language, pending state law?
If you want, I mean, I, if you want. If you want, I mean, I, if you want, I don't think it makes a difference, to be, to be frank Supervisor Patty.
Well, it does make a difference if, let's say, there's a vote, and just to challenge that, if, let's say, the strike, the state challenge, or the lawsuit that challenges the state law strikes down, but then we have an agendized amending this county provision, and it doesn't say contingent on the outcome, I'm just concerned that we may have a, a problem where there would be a conflict for a participant to vote.
We won't, we won't, but if you wanted to say that, I'm sure Josh can put that language in there.
Yes, through the chair Supervisor Patty, this is the second item we brought to update the manual in the last two months, I believe. And should that occur, I would be happy to bring a third, so that we can make sure the manual is consistent with the state, with the state law.
Well, but it should be, it should be reflected right now, before we ratify it. And to that point Supervisor Ding, again, through the chair Supervisor Ding, you had a question on the purchase policy, but if we ratify this, that becomes our protocol. So if you have a challenge to the language, now is the time to share, so it can be amended, and we pull this for, we pull this, you know, we can pull it and, and vote on it at a separate time when it's amended.
I guess a question, am I reading that section correctly on purchases?
Is this in the travel policy that you're referring to?
No, this was in reimbursement policy.
I'm not familiar with the requirement to purchase items online personally, so I can take a look at that and, and make sure it's consistent with what you're desiring.
Okay, I mean, I don't want to hold this whole thing up, and they can always bring it back and, and revisit it. What I don't want to do is penalize Main Street, you know, by telling, you know, employees that actually are taking time to, out of their own time to go to the store to buy something. I, you know, I'd rather applaud them for taking the initiative to do it, to begin with, and give them a ribbon. But I just want to make sure there's nothing in our policy that's driving people to online Walmart orders as opposed to visiting Main Street.
Chairman Rickman, can I respond?
Oh, yeah, that's.
Yes, go ahead.
Supervisor Ding, is this regarding the email that I sent yesterday regarding making purchases at Office Depot in person rather than online?
That might be where I got it.
Okay, so that's with regard to using the Cal card, and there are restrictions to using the Cal card that's not being addressed here today.
So that's a separate from, from this?
And it really doesn't stop us from shopping local or going to the store. It's only through Office Depot or required to purchase online or through a business account. So there, there is no limitation to.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification.
All right, thank you Supervisor Patty still has the floor.
Thank you Chairman. And through the chairs, I have a question for you. I'm looking at County Administration Administrative Manual, number thirty-five-hundred, and I'm seeing on page four, just for clarity, it says, County Administrator is charged with the responsibility to approve or disapprove requests for authorized travel on official county business with the per-employee cost over $1,000 for an in-state trip and up to $5,000 for both out-of-state and in-state trips, et cetera, as it finishes. Is that for departments only? Because there isn't a clarification, because we know that the C A O has no authority over the board.
Through the chair Supervisor Patty, my understanding is that it does apply to the board as well. I can say that I've received travel requests related to board travel and approved them, so I believe it does apply.
Okay, then I'm going to motion that we pull this.
Actually, I just want to clarify, so board members' travel approval goes through the chairman, the chairman's travel approval goes to the auditor, and the chiefs of staff do go to the C A O's office if it's out of state and over a certain dollar amount. Individual board members do not go to the county administrators.
All right, I would still venture to say that, since the C A O works below us, that we establish that the Board of Supervisors decides our fate and the fate of our staff. And it might be approved by the, by the chairman if that's the protocol, but we've also established that no single supervisor has authority above others. So that's a bit of a quagmire if we were to follow what we passed in San Joaquin County several years ago, but it wasn't related to travel. So I would venture to say we should pull this item and flush it out a little better, address a couple of the questions that were brought up, and, and then reintroduce it.
You just want to pull for a separate vote?
Yeah, thank you Chairman, I'd pull for a separate vote.
All right. Anyone else? All right, so this item will be pulled. You want to vote on it now Supervisor Patty? You wish for more discussion?
Just pull, I'd say pull it now. I'd make a motion to pull item number four on consent and not approve it at this time.
Second, second motion.
So you're talking about when you're pulling it, bringing it back at a later time? That's what you're referring to?
That's correct Chairman, thank you.
Okay, all right, well, we have a motion to pull and bring it back at a, another time. Do you know approximately when? Future board meeting?
When would this be? Could this, just a couple of these issues, maybe meet with supervisors, talk about any questions that they may have in next month or so?
Certainly, so just to be clear, the two items that I'm hearing, that we want to flush out a little bit more, the Levine Act and this, this travel related to the board?
So far, but there may be others as well, that, that some of the supervisors that may come up.
Well, if we have any discussion, you, you might, you might want to have it now, because through the Brown Act and stuff like that, we all can't get together outside and discuss this. So if there's any concerns or any changes, anybody else have any changes, you might want to mention it right now?
Well Chairman, my suggestion would be that staff just meets with each supervisor individually.
Okay, that's fine.
And talks about those.
That's fine. All right, we have a motion and a second. Can you get a vote please? All right, we have adopted four to one, four yeses, one no. They're abstent, yeah. All right, we're going to move on to, and before we move on, I just want to, for staff, we're going to pull consent item number twelve and postpone it for another date. Item will come back to a board at a later date, so. All right, move on to the next item, which is item number ten. That was from Supervisor Ding. Supervisor Ding.
Thank you Chairman. I don't want to take a lot of time here. I'm, I'm still getting used to this process, but to me consent items are housecleaning. And when we're putting things on the consent item that should be discussed, especially when, you know, there are things that, that the county and their staff deserve accolades for. I mean, you know, some of the biggest concerns in this community right now are drug abuse and homelessness. And when the county and their staff work so hard to actually deliver and it's thrown on a consent item, I, 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 one, I think for the public and maybe when we talk about the P I O, we're going to discuss later, that'll get addressed too. I saw something on Channel Three News the other night where they were talking about, they're still saying the same thing, gun violence is the number one killer of, of children, and it's not true. You know, it's drug abuse, it's suicide, and, and here you've got county staff, you know, whenever opioids are discussed, I want to discuss it. I don't want to bury it, because it's very, very important. The only reason I pulled the items, you know, the Mary Magdalene Community Services should be applauded, even though Mary Magdalene isn't the same association. I thought it was a biblical association, but it had a different connotation, wife there. But when we're talking about solutions that the county staff has worked so hard on, I just, my idea of a consent item is housekeeping. And some of these items really need to be looked at, not on gee, we've got a deadline two weeks before the next agenda, let's just stick it under consent. Let's think about it a little bit. So I brought you up here to say thank you, great job, these are great programs, and actually hitting the nail on the head with some solutions. So thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ding, through the chair Greg Dietrich, Director of the San Joaquin County Healthcare Services Agency. Been a long time coming for this project. You see some dates on, on the letter here of getting a CHAFA funding. I think Chair Rickman did the groundbreaking out there in French Camp, but back when the sun was out, it's been several months. But I'm still waiting on the modular constructions to be physically placed there. There's actually a third funded by continuum of care dollars. We're on our last graces with the state for some extensions. I think we're third or fourth extension now. Need to get it up and running, but I, my understanding now is, is we might have the facility completed in July and August. And the item before you here is really for an expansion for a turning point to move from their full-service partnerships into providing the 24/7 staffing for this co-occurring mental health and substance use. But I think it is, it is a good win for the community, it's an expansion of our services for people that are coming from homeless shelters or, or from jail. So it's, it's a hopefully a good partnership. You saw in the letter how it's a, was a struggle to find the contracted partner going through two rounds of R F Ps and then having to do direct negotiations. So I'm very thankful that Turning Point was able to step up, and hopefully come late summer, we begin operations.
All right, thank you. I don't think, any other?
Speaker from, you have something? All right Supervisor Patty, go ahead.
Thank you Chairman. Quick question, Mr. Dietrich, how many beds? What would be the capacity when fully functional and, and incorporated?
So on discussion today is for the operator, but it would be operating two 16-bed facilities total, or 32 beds, one for males, one for females. It's co-occurring, so generally individuals with mental health and substance use, and it'd be a dedicated facility for them. There is a third 16-bed modular that's also been constructed at the same time in one, you know, construction organization that would be run by county staff and be a complement to our recovery house out there. But in total, three 16-bed facilities will be constructed.
Right, and if I understand and I appreciate Supervisor Ding bringing this forward for discussion, because you, we want to take victory laps when things get done and, and at the behest of your, your efforts. So we appreciate that coming forward to the board for approval, and this is also with services?
Correct, so this is the operator, it's a third-party operator, and hopefully there'll be, as I mentioned, Chair Rickman was there during the groundbreaking, but hopefully come August, September, there'll be a ribbon cutting as well and more of a ceremony.
Excellent, thank you very much. Thank you Chair.
All right, thank you. There's no other speaker in the queue, so we'll move on to item number eleven Supervisor Ding.
What?
Item number, you pulled item number eleven?
Yeah, I already addressed all of them at one time. The opioids, anyway, I was just, what I just said.
Thirteen and fourteen also?
Correct.
All right. We're going to move on to item number fifteen, where this item is going to be pulled for a separate vote, and I will turn it over to our C A O.
Thank you Chair. This item involves the approval and authorization by the Director of Purchasing and Support Services to sign four amendments for four independent contractor agreements to increase funding by a total of $2,200, $525,000 for on-call subcontractor weatherization services and extend the agreement through June 30th of 2024. This is a, a normal function that we do with our Human Services Agency. The issue here is that our Purchasing and Support Services Director retired last Friday. And so what I am asking is that the direction be changed to allow me to sign the four contracts in lieu of the purchasing director, since that position would normally report to me. And I would ask that we revise the, the board order to reflect county administrator in lieu of the Director of Purchasing in both the title and in item number five.
All right, thank you C A O. We have any questions? Don't see any speakers in the queue? All right, then if none, I'll entertain a motion to.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second, can I vote please? All right, it's adopted five zero.
Thank you Chair.
All right, thank you. All right, that's all we have for consent, so I'll make a, or I entertain, entertain a motion to approve consent items one through twenty-six minus items four, twelve, and fifteen.
Second.
Okay, thank you both, can I get a vote please? All right, that's adopted to five zero. All right. You know, we have our nine AM scheduled morning, and that's the public hearing to consider the Planning Commission, recommendation to approve general plan text amendment. But we're going to move, we're going to move an item ahead of that. I know Supervisor Villaputa mentioned to me that we have, under the discussion items, our first one, the county-wide comprehensive energy project, folks here need to be out of here by 11:30 or so. And so to be on the safe side, we are going to, with the board approval, of course, if there's no objections, our next item will be board discussion consideration of a county-wide comprehensive energy project, and this was continued from March 14th, 2022, no, 2023. Supervisor, or Vice Chair, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you Chairman. Well, this is a continuation from last meeting. We instructed County Council to work with, with N G Services to come back and work out an agreement. And County Council, do you have an update on how that's going?
Through the chair Supervisor Villaputa, we were able to have several helpful conversations with Chris McCormick, who is counsel for N G. She raised some of the same concerns that I raised that last week's board, or last time we met. Based upon our discussions, I think the board has two options. One of the things that we spoke about the last time we met was it being in the county's best interest to have some agreement that memorializes the work that N G would be doing and protects the county from any risk or liability from having N G and their affiliates come on to county property. And so in, in speaking with their council, there is a, a site agreement that would allow N G to come on to county property. It would provide the county with some insurances. It sets forth the work that N G is going to be doing, and N G has agreed that it would be free in writing. So that's an option for you. We spoke about Section 1090 of the Government Code, which is the, which is the F P P C, and I will tell you that as it relates to energy companies, public entities have been doing their best to craft solutions that do not run a file of the F P P C. And I will tell you that the, that the site access agreement has not yet been reviewed by the F P P C. And perhaps it presents a low risk to the county, but I think that there is, there is a possibility that there is still some risk. The other option for the county is, of course, to do, follow our standard practice, which is an R F P. And the third option that this county has is, is one big agreement with N G that allows them to do the energy study and whatever work that flows from that. Now, the caveat is that, for that is, you don't know what work is flowing. And the F P P has said, you can enter into one big contract, but you cannot come back to amend that contract. So if you're buying in it, you're buying the whole thing right now.
Chairman, with your permission, can I have General Services Marcia Kynam come forward and maybe N G? Thank you Director Kynam. Good morning, Mr. Ocho. Marcia, do you, in regards to County Council's comments, do you prefer a route to go forward? Do you see a passageway we can proceed?
So my question to counsel would be, just for clarification, I definitely see the benefit, as we discussed last time, in a comprehensive plan. I don't have an issue with the assistance of helping to come up with a comprehensive plan, but I think what I heard counsel just say, from that plan, whatever we derived from the plan and decided we would move forward on, it would be an N G project?
If you're going with N G, it would be. If you're not going to do an F R, or R F P, excuse me, it's.
Do we have the option to do some in-house and some with N G? Do we have the option to do some in-house and some with NG?
If the board gives you that direction, absolutely.
But we would not have the option to go with another vendor, and that does not concern me.
So if we do the site access agreement, you have the option to go with yourself, NG, or anyone else.
Okay. Through the board, through the chair, Marsha, do you see a remedy here?
Thanks for the opportunity to speak on this again. County Council is right, those are your three options. The RFP option is really problematic because I haven't seen any public entity do that on a large scale. You can choose one item and say, yeah, we want to go out to bid on that, but a county-wide comprehensive project, let's say, you know, and I threw out a number of $15 million with staff at one time, that'll take $5 million to produce an engineered RFP. There is nobody who's going to spend that kind of money developing an RFP. You do a request for qualifications, which is really simple. You can, but you end up with the same issues that you have right now, because let's say the company who gets selected, you know, you'll want to have some kind of same arrangement with them about no cost and all of that when they develop the project. So, you know, so that might lead to the same dilemma. As far as the site access agreement, you know, that is the, like County Council mentioned, we view that as the lowest risk to us, the county. The third option was one contract, and again, she's absolutely right. I don't know how to produce a contract right now at a fixed price, a fixed scope, without looking at your facilities and not changing down the road. So to us, the best option to make this actually progress and work is the site access agreement. We did engage outside counsel in the last two weeks, who's done a lot of work on this statute of 1090, and his opinion was that as long as, you know, agreement doesn't specify any deliverables or any scope, it's just an access agreement, it's pretty low risk. Beyond that, I would have to ask County Counsel to talk to our attorney.
Through the chair, would that remedy work for you?
It all works for me. Here's the bottom line. As long as, when it gets down to, we come back and there's a presentation, and we're not tied into having to do financing, or we're able to define who gets the credits from the renewable energy, how we're going to finance, how we're going to do this, then I'm totally comfortable with it. But if it ties us into any way that we're doing any type of a P3 or a power purchase agreement, I don't think the numbers are what this board would want to see from a fiscal perspective. But again, we don't know what any of it is until we go through the works of coming up. It's hard to say. We don't know what it is until we do a comprehensive plan, right, and present what all of it is, and would say, we'll accomplish this by this, we'll accomplish this by this, we'll accomplish. It's something that we have to undertake and do. So as long as we're able to make those decisions and make options as we move forward and can say, this piece of the pie will do like this, or this piece of the pie will accomplish it best and most cost-effective like this, that's my only concern. I don't want to be tied into, this is the way we'll have to do it as we move forward, that we have options on what we would do from a cost perspective in how the county gets the best benefit out of this.
Right, well, through the chair, Mr. Ding, you're offering a service right now based on a quote, and you're not asking for any obligation, correct?
Yes, there is no obligation on the county at all, and just to clarify, we do not finance projects. We do offer a PPA, a power purchase agreement, but it's completely optional. In fact, my belief, this is my belief, that right now PPAs are not as attractive as the county going out of its own financing because of the Inflation Reduction Act. So we have no preference on financing at all, and again, what we are asking for is a site access agreement, and it doesn't obligate county to anything. They can do whatever they want after site access agreement is approved.
Okay, so Director Cunningham, you have no problem, you know, with NG accessing the county, and then we have somebody maybe help him out, tag along, and so forth?
Correct, have him work with our energy manager, and the only other thing I think that would be important, we have filled out one of the NIMs 2 to get grandfathered in, so we've made sure that process is all set, we're able to do that. I know NG has offered the ability to do that. If it's a combined effort, because it's a matter of time we have until April 13th, 15th to get that in, is when they're designating the contractor, and I've talked to PG&E for right now, we would want to say San Joaquin County, and in the future, as we designate who the contractors are, we would change that information on our apps with PG&E.
Okay, all good. Done, thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. Supervisor Ding.
I want to thank you for coming back, the calls I have made, and in discussion with staff. Your company has an incredible reputation and would be a great partner for the county, and I think you've just answered all the questions I had on financing. The only other issue I remember you discussing last time is the low-hanging fruit, you know, changing light bulbs, and I'm sure you guys can work that out, but I'm much more comfortable than I was last time.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Ding. CAO, yep?
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question, because I know we started off talking about the legality, and as you may recall, I did a little five-minute presentation on our last meeting regarding NG, and, you know, whether or not that would be even an economically beneficial way to go with any energy company, not just pointing at NG. And I believe Ms. Cunningham had made a comment about, we did the Foothill Land project, landfill project with Amoresco, and that we would have been considerably better off had we done the project ourselves. And I had asked her to take a look at that and see what that might have materialized into had we done that. Do you have something you might share with the board?
So what I can tell the board is that ultimately, if we had done the project on our own, so in the county paid Amoresco in the first two years, $1.3 million. For the life of the Foothill project, we will pay the vendor $17.3 million for the solar Foothill project.
Excuse me, Ms. Cunningham. Point of order, we're talking about a comprehensive energy review plan.
Right.
What's this have to do with Amoresco? I have no clue.
Well, and we addressed it. It boils down to how we decide we're going to pay for things, and I think NG said, as you just mentioned, that they do do financing, but right now, it's not the attractive way to go. The bottom line is, and the point that we're trying to get across, and I was happy he shared that, is that had we done the project on our own, right now, our projected savings for the solar Foothill is $17 million. Had we not done a power purchase agreement, we would have made $38.5 million on that project. So even the vendor today has stated that's not the attractive way to go any longer. Again, that project was many years ago. That's the importance of what we're trying to stress today. Economically, things have changed. Where we are as a county has changed. The technology for solar has changed. So what we make as a decision, how we're going to fund project and how we would fiscally move forward, what we find out from this comprehensive plan, that we would want to be very in tune to how we do that most cost-effectively for the county, period. That's all it has to do with it, and that's our biggest concern. So.
All right, CAO, anything else?
That was it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to address the board on this item? And none? We'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Patty.
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Took a couple of notes here. I'd make a motion to approve and authorize a right-of-entry agreement, as we're discussing, and direct staff to work with NG, as Marsha has noted, to file the solar interconnection applications before the April 14th, 2023 deadline.
Oh, second motion.
Yeah, a motion and a second. I'd have a quick question for our County Counsel. You mentioned 1090. What was just proposed as a motion? How does that, I mean, are we in compliance with that?
I'll say it's low risk. That's all I can tell you, Supervisor Patty. Low risk. And the reason why I say that is because the FPPC has not specifically dealt with this particular issue, but they've dealt with a number of issues dealing with solar and agreements, and this route is taking us down a different path that the FPPC has not advised on.
How long would it take to get an advisory letter from the FPPC?
Their website says 21 days, but I'd say probably more than 21 days, to be frank.
Okay, thank you. All right, there's no other speakers. I'll go ahead and do a vote. All right, it's adopted, three S's, one no, and one N. All right, that's it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to our 9:00 AM scheduled morning item. That is a public hearing to consider the Planning Commission recommendation to approve general plan text amendment number PA-2200212, and that's for all districts. Senator, how you doing?
I'm well, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you both for being here. And I want you to go ahead and take it away.
Thank you. Jennifer Jolly, Director for Community Development, appreciate you hearing this item this morning. If you will recall, we were here about six months ago to provide an update on some new policies we had created about nine months prior to that. We've done our best to address requests from the board to find some alternatives for truck parking opportunities, especially in the south part of the county, which was one of our biggest challenged areas. So this morning, I have Senior Planner Megan Aguirre, who will be doing a presentation, and then we are happy to answer any questions.
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. The project before you today is a general plan text amendment to add locational criteria and policies to the agricultural-industrial general plan designation, also called AI, which would provide more flexibility to where the designation may be applied while also protecting agriculture and the delta. In addition to this, the AI designation has been added to a table in the document, and the general description was updated. In January of last year, this Board of Supervisors approved text amendments to the general plan and development title to add the agriculture-industrial general plan designation and the corresponding zoning, along with some general locational criteria and development requirements for truck parking and sales. This approval included the redesignation and rezoning of 30-plus parcels. In September of last year, staff was directed to consider changes to add more flexibility to the approved general plan policies in response to requests from property owners whose properties could not meet the approved locational criteria. In February of this year, staff brought forward the subject general plan text amendment to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission voted 5 to 0 to refer the proposed changes to the board with one additional limitation that will be mentioned on the next slide and discussed later in the presentation. So the first modification is related to freeway-highway access. The proposed changes include allowing parcels with frontage along State Routes 4, 12, and 88, as well as parcels along I-580 and State Route 132 that have a designated haul route approved by the Department of Public Works. At the request of the San Joaquin Farm Bureau Federation, Planning Commission added a limitation that parcels be located within one mile of I-580 or State Route 132 regardless of the length of the haul route. Other changes include parcel size exceptions to allow review of parcels greater than 20 acres in size, and parcels located in the secondary zone of the delta on a case-by-case basis. The proposed language also continues to exclude parcels in the primary zone of the delta, on prime farmland, or under a Williamson Act contract. Staff met separately with the Delta Protection Commission, Delta Stewardship Council, and the San Joaquin Farm Bureau Federation regarding the proposed text amendments. As a result of the meetings, and as noted on the prior slide, staff recommends allowing parcels located within the secondary zone of the delta on a case-by-case basis, but excluding the primary zone of the delta, and further clarifying the exclusion on Williamson Act properties and prime agricultural land, which was included as a policy in the originally adopted text. The Farm Bureau also raised a concern about allowing properties along I-580 and State Route 132 with a designated haul route, but no specific distance limitation. The concern is that properties located miles away from I-580 or State Route 132 in more rural areas could become AI, so it was requested that the county add a limitation of half-mile from I-580 and State Route 132. The Planning Commission considered the Farm Bureau's request and ultimately voted to add a limitation that parcels be located within one mile of I-580 and State Route 132. No maximum distance was added to the designated haul route. This map depicts areas in pink that would be automatically excluded from AI with the proposed text amendment because these parcels are within the jurisdiction of a city designated as prime farmland, under Williamson Act contract, or within the primary zone of the delta. Areas in white may potentially apply for discretionary review to request redesignation to agriculture-industrial. The current general plan policies limit the number of potential agriculture-industrial sites to 265 potential parcels. With the proposed text amendments, this number increases to 432 parcels plus an additional 86 parcels within one mile of I-580 and State Route 132 that could potentially receive approval for a designated haul route. This would result in a total of 518 parcels that could potentially be redesignated to This is a map depicting the southwestern portion of the county where I-580 and State Route 132 are located. As noted on the prior slide, areas depicted in pink are excluded because they are either located within the jurisdiction of a city designated as prime farmland, under Williamson Act contract, or within the primary zone of the delta. Some parcels may meet more than one of these criteria. Parcels depicted in white are potentially eligible for redesignation as agriculture-industrial if they meet all other general plan policies, which include using an approved designated haul route to I-580 and State Route 132. The Farm Bureau's requested half-mile limitation on parcels using a haul route is depicted as a light green dashed line. This would limit the number of potential future agriculture-industrial parcels along these freeways to 72 parcels for a total of 504 potential AI parcels countywide. Parcels within one mile of I-580 and State Route 132 are depicted with a solid green line, and would allow an additional 14 parcels in this area to be eligible for a total of 518 parcels countywide. The Planning Commission added this one-mile limitation when forwarding the proposed text amendment. After the Planning Commission hearing, staff was approached by a property owner with land located approximately two miles from I-580, who indicated that they are interested in applying for the AI designation and zone. As a result, our GIS staff has also added a dashed teal line to represent where a two-mile buffer would fall on the map. This would result in a total of seven additional parcels becoming eligible in the vicinity of I-580 and State Route 132 for a total of 525 parcels countywide. In order to approve a general plan text amendment, the Board of Supervisors must find that the internal consistency of the general plan is maintained in adoption of the amendment. Since the proposed... Since the proposed changes are for clarification to an existing land use designation and still address the general plan's policies related to the protection of agricultural land and the Delta, staff recommends that this finding can be made. In conclusion, staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors adopt an ordinance and corresponding resolution to approve general plan text amendment number PA 22212, based on the ability to make the required basis for general plan text amendment. Thank you. This concludes staff's presentation. We're here to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you both. Before we open a public hearing, any of the board members have any questions? Seeing none. All right, we will open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. And just to remind everybody, you do have only three minutes for public comments. I've received one public comment form, and it's from John LeBerk. You want to lift that up a little bit? There's a little button over to your right. Yeah, we can't hear you. It's like magic, you know?
Good afternoon. I'm John LeBerk with Hareem Crowe Tree's Sun Tag. Thank you for considering this item, and I would ask that you support it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the board on this item? Seeing none, going once, going twice. All right, we will go ahead and close the public hearing, and bring it back to the board. I have a question. Oh, it's all that you and I have discussed this in length for months, it feels like. What about the Tracy Boulevard property that we discussed? I mean, it is approximately two miles away, but if you take Crispin Road, it's a truck route. You take Lenny Road, it's a truck route up to, I don't know, I forget how, what's the distance from Lenny that the truck route ends. But if that's put in, come into state, state compliance with being a truck route and a star route, and it's, it's a non-ag area, so why, why wouldn't that be something that we could use?
I believe the property that you're speaking about came to our attention after we had taken the item to the Planning Commission hearing. So when we spoke about it, we had already gotten a recommendation from the, from the Planning Commission. We did include information so that you could make a decision today whether to expand that radius from 580. If we expanded it to the two-mile radius, then it would capture that property. What's challenging about creating policies is that you're never going to get every single person's property that you, that you may want to. Or if we're aware of it, and we can create some language, we try to address it, which is what we did today by offering the two-mile radius. The Farm Bureau's original opposition was that we left it to open-ended. We did that in an attempt to try to capture the good locations for truck parking.
But if we limit it just to that, we can have an exemption or exception just to that Tracy Boulevard stretch, couldn't we, without opening up to everything for that two miles?
Yes, I would, I would state that you could if you wanted to. I will let you know, though, that we've had a couple of other people who have contacted us about some other locations that do meet the locational criteria, except they did not meet the parcel size criteria. So with the changes recommended today, there would be a couple of other people that could potentially qualify that would be excluded if we kept it just to the Tracy Boulevard, Lenny Road area.
And if we, at this time, just limit it to the Tracy Boulevard section, not just one spot, but the area itself, you know, Tracy Boulevard from Lenny, whatever, how, you know, past, I don't know how far it would go up, say, the canal, or even past the canal. But my point is staying on Tracy Boulevard. And if there's a time that we will need to add more parcel, we can come back to this board and change it, couldn't we?
Policy is always.
Right.
Yes.
So, and what people don't realize is it's, you know, you, when this first came up, I believe it was last year or so, and when we were discussing with truck parking, and, you know, they were looking off of I-5, and, you know, I think a lot of them were off of 99. The problem we have here on, in the South County, on Interstate 580, you have, what, I believe there's three off-ramps off of 580. And so it is very limited where our trucks can come out and park. And when you do come off of 580, you know, one of the, except, or one of the prohibitions is prime ag, prime ag land. And all that area pretty much is prime ag land, you know, within, within a mile of 580. So here, South County, we're probably one of the fastest-growing economic base in this county. And, you know, our base here in San Joaquin County is industrial and, you know, different types of commercial manufacturing, which is a result of more big rigs and semis coming in and out of the area. But yet, they don't have a place to park in South County because of the geographical limitations that we have. So if you limit it to one mile, you know, we're not solving the problems that I'm hearing of, of the big rigs parking on our on-and-off ramps, big rigs parking on our county roads on the shoulders in which we do get complaints of. And you do see when these big rigs park on the shoulders of some of these county roads, or on, on-and-off ramps of our interstates, you see the damage that they, that they do. And that does cost the county more money. It's a, it's a, a safety issue, too, for motor vehicles, other motor vehicles, limited sites, and so on. So, and that's why I think, you know, and again, just carve that exemption for now for that Tracy Boulevard area. And it doesn't solve all the problems, but it makes it a lot better. And then we do identify areas, you know, talking to the Farm Bureau and see what some of their concerns are. And then, you know, there's a possibility we can expand that. So that would be my recommendation. Issue with that?
So can I just clarify what you would be asking for? So Tracy Boulevard runs north and south.
Right.
It, I think we're talking about Tracy Boulevard, south of Lenny Road, all the way to 580.
Right.
And then to the west, maybe to Corral Hollow Road, which is, I believe, kind of that area that we've, we've been challenged with trying to find a solution.
Right. The problem with Corral Hollow Road, though, if I'm correct, and you have Tracy Hills, I don't believe that's a truck route, correct?
It's not that it's not a truck route. It's that we don't want to exacerbate a problem that's already going on out there, which is why we added the language about needing the approved haul route. So there are better alternatives. But from a parameter perspective of trying, of trying to figure out which properties you would like to be considered for future AI inclusion, I, I would recommend we have some parameters on where to, where we end that. Because if we say just Tracy Boulevard, and then there's a parcel that does not, but Tracy Boulevard, but it's located between Corral Hollow and Tracy Boulevard, I don't.
Right, I see.
Indifferently exclude that.
I see what you're saying. But on that note, too, we have to keep the big rigs off of Corral Hollow.
Right. So the discretionary application process for a general plan zone reclassification, and then a land use permit would come before your board for, with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. We would be doing environmental review on things like that. So the haul route would need to be identified as part of the approval, if we were recommending approval. So I think we can address it on a case-by-case basis. And I think everyone, I think everyone agrees that Corral Hollow is not the best route for, for trucks.
No, and you're looking at Crispin Road from Crispin from 580 all the way to 11th Street is a truck route. You have, God, what is it? The intersection, 11th and Crispin, was redone what, a couple of years ago for, just as purpose, for making it a truck route. You have 11th Street, which I believe is designated a truck route. So 11th Street connects you to I-5, which connects you to 580, and, and so on. So, I mean, that's why Crispin Road is such, you know, a valuable option on that. So you can keep the rigs off of Corral Hollow, which you have Tracy Hills. And I know the community of Tracy wants that road expanded, because if you go in there, those of you that commute in the city of Tracy and go down Lenny Road and Corral Hollow at four, five, six, seven in the morning, you'll see what I'm talking about. It's a lot of complaints on that. So with that being said, I'll yield my time. Supervisor Patty.
Thank you, Chairman. Through the chair, Director Jolly, thank you for being here. And appreciate the work and the effort, and listening, a lot of moving parts and conflicting, well, not conflicting concerns, but, you know, interests that need to be addressed. And I believe you guys have done a great job with this. I do have a question. I know I spoke with you briefly about it, but apparently, there's a need, and I remember, I just read an article in Wall Street Journal, I believe it was, last week or two, that there's a need for container storage. So what would we need to do, and I'm not saying that we would put it in today, right now, but what, what, what process would we need to do that if there is truck parking, and they have ample space, and again, this could be fluctuate between need and, and availability of, to, to facilitate. But one of these such applicants is saying that, you know, they've got trucking companies are saying, I need a place that we could store containers as we're transiting to and from and getting them off the road when it's, when the time isn't right. So what would be the process to include container storage if a location was deemed appropriate and spacious enough and whatever?
So through the chair, what I would say is that we would need to address the types of uses permitted in the AI zone. So what we did when we originally created this new zone, general plan policies about a year plus, a couple of months ago, we really wanted to ratchet it down so that it was really just providing kind of that immediate relief for a problem that we have, which was illegal truck parking all over the county. Then, when we went to do our, about a two, three-year process to get our development zoning code updated, we did some outreach with the commission, as well as stakeholders, about what other uses may be appropriate for the AI zone. So we added things like personal storage, RV storage, things like that. So what you're talking about, I believe the use type would be considered warehouse, what is it?
I think it might be outdoor.
Outdoor storage.
Yeah.
Which currently in the AI zone is allowed.
Mm-hmm.
So if we were doing outdoor storage, it's already currently allowed by the zoning code. So apparently, that is something that, that could be allowed for an AI.
Would we be okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Excellent. Well, thank you. I know, I know, I threw it to you in your busy day, and, and it was something that we.
I do apologize. If I got that wrong, it's, exactly.
No, 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 it was something you said that we can revisit or look at. So we've looked at it. That's great. I appreciate it. Thank you. Again, excellent job. I know there's a lot of concerned interests in this and, and a purpose to it. So I think you and staff have done a great job. Thank you. That's all, Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Canepa.
I just have some clarification points. So when people join the Williamson Act, can you speak a little bit to that? I mean, so is the thought that it's in perpetuity? I mean, what's the tax benefit? Can you kind of explain to that? Would be question number one. Question number two, I'm not familiar with this area. How many people were in opposition? And how many people were even notified? Because how, I don't know how many people live in the area. So is it, is there not people in opposition because nobody was notified and knows what's going on? And, you know, because I want to do what's best for the city of Tracy. And that's the other question is what overlap and overlay? And then who ultimately decides whether it's us or the city of Tracy, what happens in their community is my third question.
So through the chair, Supervisor Canepa, I'm going to turn the Williamson Act question over to Megan, who coincidentally is the staff person that processes Williamson Act. So we'll just touch on that briefly. But essentially, yes, you're correct. It's a tax break, but there are ways to get your property out of it. It is a bit of a long-term commitment. So I'll turn that over to Megan.
So Williamson Act, you have to have a certain designation for your property. You also have to be a certain size acreage. And it does provide a tax benefit, but it's not in perpetuity. So how it works is it's a rolling contract. You either have a 10-year or a 20-year contract on your property, and it self-renews annually unless you stop that process. So if I start my contract this year, I would have to put in a notice of nonriddle next year to stop the contract from continuing to always be at 10 years or 20. There are other processes for getting out, but primarily, we only deal with that process or a cancellation, which is immediate, but requires some findings to be made and a fee to be paid. And all of that, the fee and the tax break is all decided by the assessor's office. We don't actually do that in our office.
Oh, they're able to get out of it anytime. So it's just, how many acre parcels are they? That, you said it had to be a certain acreage.
Yes. So it used to be 20 acres for prime and 40 for non-prime. We've actually increased that to 40 acres for prime, 80 for non-prime to go into contract. You will see some properties less than that due to past allowances and lotline adjustments. I do apologize. What was the other part of your question?
Second part was, who was, who was notified on this? So, I mean, is it one of those little things that this is not a cram down, I hope? So that's always the question. Hey, we weren't, we didn't know about this after the fact. And it's like, well, where were you? And it's like, so I don't know who's notified and who's even in the area. I mean, because I'm not familiar with it. So if you could clarify that for me, I would appreciate it.
Sure. Through the chair. So basically, when we're creating policy for text in the general plan or the zoning code, you're notifying the whole county. So it's, unless we have specifically interested parties who have followed this, this policy decision, which Mr. LeBerk actually represents someone who has been notified because they have been interested the entire time. So anytime someone inquires with us about a project that we're working on, they would receive notification of the project. We put them at the paper. This, these are a little bit more challenging to get the individual notice. But I would like to point out that all we're doing is authorizing some parameters for people to apply to change the zoning. So each individual project site will require its own individual review and action by the board ultimately to change it. So in those cases, you would definitely be notifying people within a half-mile radius is typically what it is out in the ag zone. And there would be a lot more public participation encouraged on specific sites. That answers your question. I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, that's good. And then the part over the city of Tracy versus the county. So, I mean, how much overlap and input is there there? So, I mean, basically, you're going to get a second swipe at this. So this is just the first step for somebody who does want to do it. Then they have to bring their, their project or plan for, to re-mitigate.
Correct. And, and I will note that we do notify the city whenever we do text updates. I believe we notified all of the cities. And we also, they are a responsible agency for when projects occur within a certain distance from the city. So they get notification, and they do often comment on the projects.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Dean.
Just wanted to thank you for being solution-driven. Don't tell me no, tell me how. And I think you did that. Visually, Victor brand meat plant, great example. That would be AI.
Yes, it currently is zoned AI. They have gone through that process already.
Okay. And that is the new designation.
Correct.
Utimus. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Dean. Supervisor Patty.
Chairman, thank you. Through the chair, I have one more follow-up question. I remember the other one I asked about, one of the property owners adjacent to the freeway, which of course is Caltrans parameters. What would be permissible by advertisement?
So that would actually.
In the AI zone.
I, yes, I do recall you asking about that. So there are, there's the Outdoor Advertising Act, which I think you're familiar with, because I believe that there are some changes being recommended through the assembly. I, that would take a little bit more to look at, because you are subject to, when you're advertising to Caltrans rules, which require that your property is zoned commercial or industrial. I do not have the information today to provide whether an ag industrial parcel would qualify or not.
Okay.
We can definitely look into that, but I didn't want to derail this project with, with, that would take a little bit of time working with Caltrans on that.
Understood. So when you leave today, and you look at your stack of 562 things you need to get done in the next 30 days, add that to the, the bottom, if you will, and get to it when you can. Thank you.
Will do. Thank you.
All right. I haven't seen anybody else in the queue, so I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
And Supervisor Canepa, I would ask for a friendly amendment to include what I mentioned before, an exemption to the one-mile radius to include Tracy Boulevard, south of Lenny, between Lenny Road and Corral Hollow and surrounding area. Would that suffice?
So for clarification, are we excluding any sort of an actual radius, but giving a more specific parameter between Corral?
Right.
Okay.
So Tracy, the primary area being Tracy Boulevard. So Tracy Boulevard from Lenny Road to 580.
And I would also recommend that we clarify on the record that we are not talking about just ending at Tracy. It could be either side of Tracy Boulevard.
Correct. One second.
I just want to make sure that I'm getting it correctly.
So it would be the east and west side of Tracy Boulevard.
Right. And the same for Corral Hollow, just from a, to keep it even. Right. And the same for Corral Hollow, just from a, to keep it even. But again, everything's discretionary.
Well, the pri, yeah, the primary being Tracy Boulevard, you know, it may encroach, but primarily on Tracy Boulevard, east and west of.
I think we get it. Yeah, I think we've got that.
Will you accept that amendment?
Yes, it's your community, so I would hope that you would do what's in the best interest of your community. So yes, I will accept that.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Patty.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Before we go, moment of clarity, and I did not measure this off. We have gravel pits, and that's been discussed as repurposing that land. Is that included in this one-mile radius?
So if we are removing the radius, then we may not capture all of those. We do have other alternatives that we have already approved with the updated zoning code and general plan policies from December for industrial warehousing. So we've kind of spoken to some different property owners about whether that might qualify. The concern about opening up the AI so much is that it's really quite limiting on what properties you can look at because there's all these other parameters, like what type of designated farmland it is, size, et cetera. The IW zone is treated a little bit differently. There's more flexibility and a little bit different locational criteria. You can also do more uses in those zones. So without knowing specifically, I don't believe I ever got the specific location. I know we've had multiple conversations with multiple property owners about ideas. I could not speak to whether it will 100% capture it without the radius or not. If you wanted to include the two-mile radius, I mean, that, that's, that's the thing that we've been struggling with too, is you either maybe capture too many or not enough. So that's what we've been dealing with.
Yeah. And there's a criteria of how it fits in no matter where, but, but in these instances, we have gravel pits that are basically going to be great big giant holes in the ground that I would like to see included. So it probably does need to go to the two-mile radius.
There are a number of gravel pits within the parameters that Chair Rickman mentioned, but if it's the pleasure of the board to also include the radius, I mean, it's, it's really up to you how you want to set the parameters. Our recommendation originally was just to use the two-mile radius because we felt like that could potentially capture all of these different sites. But I understand Chair Rickman's desire to kind of make sure it doesn't, it's not too many parcels. So it's really at the board's discretion on how you want us to codify it.
If it went to two miles, you said there's, there's a few more parcels that would qualify.
It would capture the south side of 580 as well, which is, I think, some of the areas that you may be referencing.
Right. Which is desolate. There's nothing out there.
Right. We do have a number of sites down in that area that were previously mined and reclaimed and are no longer considered prime farm, farmland. So we're open to looking at solutions to doing something with those properties. What I think is important to keep in mind is that, and this goes back to Supervisor Canepa's comment about the Williamson Act, is when you're in Williamson Act, you're prime farmland. So even if you got out of the prime farmland, or the Williamson Act, you're still prime farmland. You likely would not qualify for the AI zone, which kind of addresses the farm bureau's concerns about having prematurely converting a bunch of prime farmland for truck parking. That's never been the intention. It's always been to consider parcels that are no longer good opportunities for farming, and we use a lot of different parameters to identify those. So it would be
And that is the, that's, that's kind of our rule, no matter what. If it's one mile or two miles, we've got it's, it cannot be prime ag land, correct?
Guiding, yes, correct.
Okay. So we have a safety buffer, if you will.
If you did a two-mile radius, yes. I mean, it could open it up to other areas, obviously beyond between Corral Hollow and Tracy Boulevard. But it is on a case-by-case basis, so they would have to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis before your board.
Okay. With
Chair, I'll, I'll remove my motion then if you need to amend it. So I'll remove my motion.
Okay.
Chairman, I would, I would request, since this is your district, I would request, I know that there's some gravel pits out there, and I know they like to repurpose that land for use, possible use for, for AI to be included, but it's just outside of that one mile?
I mean, I would like to wait. I mean, we've talked about the Tracy Boulevard, and you know, there hasn't been too much talk, at least discussion with, I know what you're referring to, that area. And I think there needs to be more looked into before we just approve it here.
May I speak?
Yes.
So we can look at alternatives to the AI zone. We could, if we had specific locations, then we could speak to property owners about other alternatives if the IW zone might work.
And then, and possibly include them, or on a case-by-case include them to do parking or something?
Correct. So today, we're not really changing anybody's zoning or general plan designations. All the future requests will still need to be processed and come through before your board. Today, what we're doing is we're setting policy to give staff a guiding document to say, these are areas where the board would like to consider these types of uses. So that's why it gets difficult to, to do individual properties on a policy discussion. We do individual properties on a case-by-case basis if they qualify within the parameters of the policy that's set, if that makes sense. It's a lot of words, but.
So Chair, through the chair, could we include language, like right now, again, if you have a gravel pit that's completely going to do nothing but be a great big giant hole, and somebody wants to go at the expense of reclaiming it and utilizing it, and it's not in the middle of a, of a housing development or anything, it's just completely remote, could we include language right now that on a case-by-case basis, if outside of the one-mile radius, it would qualify if the applicant so desires and upon board approval?
I hesitate to say yes, just because if we're using language like gravel pits, it's a little subjective. The question would be, did it need to be a previously approved and reclaimed quarry site? We do have quarry sites all over the county. So does it apply to all, all the areas in the county, which I wouldn't recommend because some of those are out in the middle of nowhere? So on the fly today, I don't know that that's the best recommendation. I understand what you're going for. It's a little bit difficult. I mean, it took us six months to get here because it's such a complicated, doesn't seem complicated, but it is when you're trying to figure out how many parcels to include, but not blanket everyone can qualify. And there are a lot of gravel pits down in Tracy area.
Only some are close to the 580 in the intersection where it would be appropriate. Some might be in the, like you said, middle of nowhere. You're not going to, that wouldn't be suitable if it's miles away. Chairman, it's your district, so
Right.
Somebody I know in that, you know, a couple of people there have spoken to me about that.
Yeah, and I've spoken to folks out there. And, and this is why you leave it to the district, the supervisor of that district, who knows the district better than any other supervisor up here. There are some issues, and you know, when supervisor talks, you know, hey, there isn't residential. Actually, there is out there. And then you look at 132, you're looking at on and off ramps. So there's a whole bunch of different issues. And again, that is why you leave it to the supervisor who runs that area. They know it better than anybody else up here. So I mean, hey, that's, you know, something we can look at at a later time, but there's more that needs to be looked into before we make a decision up here. And, you know, I appreciate Supervisor Patty, what he's stated. But if something goes wrong, it is not Supervisor Patty that they're going to come in to complain to, it's going to be me, you know, or any other supervisors up here. That's why we know we don't jump into other supervisors' districts. So I don't see any other, you know, I'll go ahead and make the motion since the motion was pulled, unless you want to, you know, I'll make some motion to approve the recommendation with the exemption that we talked about to exclude, include Tracy Boulevard. And, correct me if I'm, you know what, let me jump back here for that motion. We talked about two miles. You know, I did drive that here a few, few months ago. It might be a little over two miles, like two and a half miles around that area. So if we include exemption to Tracy Boulevard with that cover to, to two and a half miles, if it, if that's from the intersection to
So I think for clarification, I need to know if you're just going to be approving between the Corral Hollow, Tracy Boulevard corridor, north of 580, if that's all we're going to consider in the south part of the county, or are we also going to include the one-mile radius because of, or the two-mile radius? Because if we're not including the one or two-mile radius as part of the motion, then we wouldn't be held to that, that distance.
Well, we're going to, what we're, the recommendation, we approve the recommendation, but have a carve-out exception for Tracy Boulevard, regardless of, you know, I think it's like two and a half miles or whatever it may be. Either side, east and west, up to 580 between Corral Hollow and Tracy Boulevard.
So the recommendation from the planning commission was to consider the one-mile radius from 580, and then you could also add the parameters for that specific geographic area.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So we're approving the one-mile radius, then with adding
In addition
In addition to the Tracy Boulevard area, south of Lenny, which is approximately two and a half miles, east and west of the roadway between Corral Hollow and Lenny Road.
What we may end up doing with our GIS staff is creating an overlay zone so that staff don't have to make individual decisions whether something is applying or not. So once we get the, the new policy approved, then I think we can make it a little bit easier to identify which parcels will qualify. So again, I don't think if it, if it falls within the parameters of the Corral Hollow, Tracy Boulevard area, south of Lenny, it's like a little rectangle there, we wouldn't have to adhere to the one-mile radius.
So does that make sense? So with the one mile with the exemption of this
Yes, okay.
Particular area?
Yes.
Okay. So that's my motion.
Second.
Have we got a motion, a second, get a, or a vote, please? The adopted 5-0. Thank you both very much, and thank you, Jennifer. I know we've talked about this, God, I don't, probably almost a year now, probably more than a year.
Be patient while we brought this
Oh, thank you. You guys are doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to continue with our discussion. We're going to move up with the board approval. We're going to move up item number four, authorize the use of 2,593, 919 from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, number 20250, to fund various projects for six veteran service organizations. We're going to move that up next. I don't see anybody disagreeing with that. So we'll go ahead and start that, and we'll turn it over to you. Or is it me? I'm just looking at this.
Good morning, Chairman Rickman and members of the board. Right now, we'll go over the county administrators' recommendations for the second tranche of the Corona State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds for the veteran service organizations. As you may recall, your board committed $4 million in ARPA funds for facility repairs, upgrades, and equipment purchases at eligible veteran service organizations in San Joaquin County listed above. At the time, we informed the board that we would come back with project recommendations, and here we are. On December 5th, 2022, the county administrator's office, in coordination with the veteran service office, notified all VSOs within the county of this funding opportunity and provided applications due to our office Friday, January 27th of 2023. At the request of various VSOs, county staff visited five of the 11 VSOs to tour facilities, answer any questions, or help with the application process. Ultimately, six of the 11 organizations submitted applications for funding totaling So I'm not going to list all of their requests, but as you can see, everything that was requested is being recommended for funding.
Can you go item by item for me?
If you would like, I sure can.
I'm just joking. I'm just joking with you.
Okay. We'll start at the top. The American Legion Manteca has total request of $789,950, all of which is being recommended. The American Legion Tracy, $603,000 to, $603,000, $10247. The American Legion Ripon, $329,000. The VFW Manteca, $247,687. VFW Ripon, $378,000. And the American Legion Stockton, $246,000, $46,350, for the total requested of approximately $2.6 million. The CAO's office is recommending that all funds be spent by June 30th of 2024, which will allow for reallocation of any excess funding before the December 31st, 2024 commitment deadline. We are also recommending that the, similar to housing projects, the VSOs enter into MOUs with the county to ensure that all ARPA requirements are met. In many cases, only estimates were provided without documentation. Before any reimbursements can be made, proper documentation will need to be provided. If approved, in coordination with the General Service Division, the county administrator's office will work with the VSOs to help facilitate viable projects that align with the federal ARPA requirements and the county's capital expenditure policies. That concludes my presentation. All representatives from all VSOs that were allocated funding or that we recommended funding for are here if you have any specific questions about their projects.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the board, and it's Supervisor Patty.
Thanks, Chairman. Through the chair, a question for you. Since we had allocated up to 4 million and we're about 1.4 or whatever under
Correct.
Are we holding that off in a reserve so that any other needs, that maybe they weren't able to get bids or process, or there's other VFWs that might catch wind that there was dollars available, that, or other veteran facilities?
You are exactly correct. Because of our experience with the fire districts, as you guys may recall, that after they got wind of it, they came back. So we would like to hold the, it's approximately 1.4 million in case anyone else comes back or, or price changes in projects.
Excellent. Well, I'd just like to commend, I know that we've got veterans that are, you know, here to speak and on behalf of the board. I know they'll say words as well. But fantastic, I know that this was something that we've discussed in the past, and thank you for utilizing the dollars that we've allocated to have an incredible impact on some of these very weathered facilities that, I mean, some of them, they had, they would have no chance to, to have the extra funds do this work and, and make the, the continued use of their properties. So great job. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Just want to thank you for your hard work in the CEO's office. And I know that all these veterans are going to appreciate what we're doing with the money, and they can have a better place to have their events, and it's going to be great for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Supervisor Canepa.
I just want to say thank you for your service. This is an amazing time. I mean, to be able to have this money to do the, the things that are on this piece of paper fill my heart with joy. So it's, it's exciting that this has came through and is able to help you guys' organizations so that you can better serve veterans. So thank you. I am full support. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Canepa. All right. Seeing nobody else in the queue, we'll open up to public comment. Anybody from the public wish to address the board on this item?
I know, Vaughn, you travel all the way from Tracy. You have to be here. I mean, you have to speak at least once.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John White. I'm the post commander for Ripon Post 1051, Veterans of Foreign Wars. And on behalf of our posts, I would like to thank the board of supervisors and all the guests here. Thank you for the work that Sarah has done. On behalf of the membership, we're, we're grateful for this opportunity. We purchased the building in 2003, and we've gone through some rough times, as you're probably aware of. We've continued to persevere. The property is now fully paid for, and we continue to improve the facility. Our, our goal for this grant was basically to improve the facility and upgrade our energy-efficient needs there. We also have over 500 members of our post, and we continue to support every program available to veterans and our families in our area. We also do lots of grants, and we have Voice Democracy, Patriots Pin, Teacher of the Year, Law Enforcement of the Year, Firefighter of the Year, EMT. We continue to, to provide monies for our JRTC program, SOBR grad, and other community projects. We don't make money, we give it back. Finally, we provide a place of solace for our veterans, and we've served, oh, just last year, we served over 10,000 meals, healthy meals to our veterans and families and the community for affordable price. We also offer military services, US burial flag folding services and ceremonies. But we'd like to respectfully thank the board of supervisors for their forward thinking on this and giving back to the VSO organizations. So on behalf of our post, our past commander and previous of our post, our past commander and previous San Joaquin County Supervisor Adrian C. Fonzie, we want to present you with the Commander's Award. Thank you very much. I appreciate you guys very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Morning.
Morning.
Silverman, I'm the post finance officer for Manteca Post 249, and just wanted to say thank you from all the veterans and from the community. You're getting a two for her because not only are you helping the veterans of Manteca, you're helping the citizens of Manteca. Our hall is used by the community. We take the light in trying to help other organizations in the community with our hall, and this will help that. As Supervisor Patty mentioned, our hall is old, nearly 100 years old. It is non-ADA compliant. It is... It's terrible for our disabled veterans. They basically cannot use the hall. If they're wheelchair-bound, they have to be hand-carried up small, narrow passageways, staircases to use the bathrooms. This money will take care of that. The principal use of those funds is getting that ADA-compliant bathroom in, and that is desperately needed and really appreciated. Our security fencing, we have had some issues. That will definitely help, and again, that helps the whole community. Thank you very much on behalf of all of the veterans.
All right, thank you. That's all the time we have for public comment?
Thank you all. This is unbelievable, really, for us veterans, other organizations. You know, I'm a district manager, past district manager of VFW, district manager of the American Legion right now, of this whole county. So I know it's very much appreciated. You know, Tracy, that, we've been, American Legion, James McTerminus Post, he's named after a World War I veteran. We've been there ever since World War I, so our organization's been there a long time. The building we're in was probably built around the 40s, the 50s, around Sixth Street and Central. They moved the whole building to where the location we are now on Tracy Boulevard then. Then half, the other half we have now was built in the 50s and stuff like that. So the electrical, everything is old. So it would bring up environmentally like that, and energy efficient, and because, old building, and it's improvements. And it's used, again, our building is open to the public, it's open to veterans, and we have a lot of community activities there. And we spent a lot of our money in the inside. It's the outside stuff that basically, and the stuff that, energy-wise, we get solar and some other stuff in there, it'd be unbelievable type of building to reserve. And you've always been supportive of our veterans. Every time I come here, you've done stuff for veterans, and it is appreciated. So, thank you, and hope you all get re-elected, and you can put down that you are supported by the veterans of San Joaquin County. You know, any of your stuff, if they want to contact me, okay? So, all right? Thank you again. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Thank you, board. Thank you for your help. I appreciate it. Mike Zirk, post 190, past commander. I guess I'm a runner project. I spent a lot of years in education, so I know quite a bit. We appreciate it because our roof's in real bad shape. Structurally, it was built by volunteers 40 years ago. Management conditions is in. We're also going insulated. We have no insulation. We also want to have handicap access, but the problem is that there's no route, there's no path or route, so we had to put the path or route in, and this will do that. We did do some work, probably 10 years ago, when we had funds available to do our ADA bathroom, so we had that done. I'm looking forward to working with you, and I just really appreciate everything you've done for our veterans, not just that, but what happens within the community, just so you know that we do support our community. Voice Day, we do. College students, we work with the JRTC. We want to be out there working with kids, our next generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? And no one. I'll bring it back to the board for final comments. No, it was great. Thank you all for being here, and it's a pleasure for us, and if, you know, an honor for us to, you know, help out, do our part for our veterans. You know, we owe you all a debt of gratitude that there's no way that we can repay. But we can do what little that we can is to help you folks, help our veterans in their community. You give, not so, you gave so much, not just for our country, but you continue to give to our community. And I know I was just recently at the Ripon Post, and, you know, I spend quite a few, a lot of time at the Tracy Post, and so just want you all to know how much we do support our veterans, and that we're always here to assist and help out. All you need to do is pick up a phone and give us a call. And I just want to say also, you know, thank you to, excuse me, Sarah, for your work with this also. I know there is some different application processes and some of the stuff that got a little bit sticky, and if it does continue to do that, I know you've done a great job and continue to help out our folks with this process. So, thank you. Supervisor Patty.
Thank you, Chairman. Just in closing, and maybe going around the horn again, but I just want to point out that our veterans, those that are here, are just representing their posts and the organizations. You know, they continue, they've served their country, they've served their family, their community, and it continues as they're serving veterans and the public in so many ways, and that recognition. And just this last June, when we were doing our budget hearing, we oftentimes have local nonprofit organizations coming in and asking for one-time use, and it was myself and Supervisor Rickman, Supervisor Villa Poudoir, and, you know, when we spoke with Supervisor Kanapa and Ding, they were right on board with making certain that we set aside dollars, that, you know, instead of waiting for that annual budget, we found a pathway through the CAO's office to facilitate this and make a difference. I mean, as former Councilman Silverman had spoke of, at Post 249, they were doing $10 dinner fundraisers once a week. The profit of that, to try to get to these several hundreds of thousands of dollars needed to get up to standard for that post, would have taken decades. So, the fact that we can do what we've done and approve this, and I'll make a motion to do so, but, you know, it's something that we all take pride in, that we can recognize the veterans, your contributions, then, now, and always. So, we thank you, we appreciate you, and we're glad we can do this.
Are you making, are you going to make a motion?
I did make a motion to approve, yeah.
Oh, second motion.
Going to motion in a second, going to vote, please? All right, it is adopted 5-0. Before we move on to our next item, if you all, I know we're ripping with your plaque, can you guys all please join us at the front for a quick picture?
I want to say thank you to your staff.
Don't you?
Yes, thank you very much. They're always available to answer our questions. I want to thank you very much.
We're going to be talking to her later.
I'm taking pictures.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, no. Looking forward to it. Sir, how you doing?
Thank you, sir.
There you go. Be right back.
I thought, I thought Kanapa was going to go down there and start talking.
Well, we're going to take a quick five-minute recess.
Five minutes?
Five minutes?
Five minutes.
Almost done, dude.
...
(pause) 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 All right, everyone, welcome. We are back. It is 11:44. We're gonna move to item number two, which is from my office. Discussion of the reorganization of the Office of Emergency Services as a standalone department and direct staff to bring back a plan for implementation based on the discussion. And I'll read my board letter here. Okay, the recommendation. One, is discuss the reorganization of the Office of Emergency Services as a standalone department. And, two, direct staff to bring back a plan for implementation based on the discussion. Now, the reason for this is prior to July 18, 2011, OES was a division under direct supervision of the county administrator. In conjunction with the fiscal year 2011, 12 budget process, and after the retirement of the then department head, OES Administration/Operation Division became a division of the General Service Department, and the Director of Emergency Operations position was restricted as a division manager rather than a department head. This reorganization/restructuring appears to have been prompted by the 2008-2009 financial crisis, aka the Great Recession. In the agenda item, there is a attached relevant board letter and board order, which is B-11-302, for review if you would like. Now, OES is a key disaster preparedness office for the county and has direct responsibility to support and coordinate the efforts of the county departments carrying out their functions in the field. Given the county's experience with the drought emergency, COVID-19, and the unprecedented atmospheric rains that we're all experiencing today, or this last few months, excuse me, have caused severe flooding in the county, and OES, of course, plays a pivotal role. Now, there is no fiscal impact associated with this discussion item. Budget impacts could result from any board-directed organization restructuring and action following board approval. If review of organization restructuring is directed by the board, county administrator, or designated department will bring back to the board a review of any realignment, the impact, implementation recommendation, and timeline. Now, the reason I, you know, I just mentioned all that, and, you know, what I would request is when we were doing the realignment restructuring, that the OES reports directly to the Board of Supervisors, and the board would be responsible for hiring the director. And, you know, I don't think having OES as an auxiliary to, you know, another department when OES serves such a vital role in this county and any county that has it. I mean, you look, for example, here in San Wicky County, I mentioned, we have the floods. I know myself and Supervisor Ding has probably been the most impacted, our district, you know, we talk a lot, and so that's, you know, we have the floods. We're still on monitor with the levees, we're dealing with levy issues, snow melt that's gonna come up in June. So flooding in our levees is a huge concern, but that's just a concern we see today. You know, we have, you know, in the past had fire concerns, you know, with the hills and Crow Hollow and so on. But what people don't realize, or they don't think of, is what you see, what we have here in San Wicky County. We have, for example, the rail yards, the rail rails, and you see around the country what's happening to, you know, what's happening out there. Trains being derailed, we have, you know, these tanks erupt and this environmental catastrophe. Plus, there's health and safety issue and life issue and property damage. And plus the big rigs, you know, we talked a little bit about today, industrial and manufacturing. And what people also don't realize is some of the plants that we have here, and the industrial complexes that we have here, are some very, very, very bad chemicals that if they were released in some way, an explosion, whatever it may be, again, you see this in other states and other parts of the world, would be a major catastrophe, which would prompt a huge Officer of Emergencies, OES response and incident command response. And plus, every day, what people see every day out there and you don't realize is the big rigs up and down our interstates and what they are carrying inside some of those containers. So we have a lot of methel, ethyl, bad stuff out there. And, you know, it's one thing to plan for an event in the long run knowing, for example, you know, we're planning for flooding, we're, you know, for levees and so on. But that's one side of it. It's different when you have the possibility of a derailment which releases some bad stuff that you have to respond to immediately. Get resources, get people out there, get coordination among your ally agency to save lives and property. So having such an important role in the save of lives and property, I personally believe, and I'm not gonna question the board in the past, you know, I would never have put OES under any other organization, other any department. It should have always stayed with the department. We've had issues with during COVID-19, I'm not gonna get into with some information sharing and stuff like that. But that's my recommendation, that's what I would like to see. So with that being said, I'm just gonna open up to the board. Supervisor Patty.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm quick on the draw. I'm sure other supervisors are gonna speak up on this. And I believe is it a separate discussion to bring on a PIO?
Yeah, that's the second one.
The second one, okay, thank you. So just for clarity on this, I agree, I've been in the county now for six-plus years. I've met with and worked with other people that have vast experience in OES department. I've visited other counties to examine what's going on and how they're structured, especially when I've seen some issues that were not being addressed. There wasn't a good chain of command, not by the fault of anybody in particular, but there was just a structure that wasn't working. And that was admitted by, you know, those that were even overseeing it, Ms. Cunningham, and again, no fault of her own, but she came too forward to me, I was chair at the time, and she said, "The structure's not working as is." And I made, and she made some recommendations that we adopted at the time. But I agree with you, Chairman. This has been in the past, and it has been its own department in the past. And I believe it would be to the benefit of this county, to those that we serve, that we have a fully integrated, populated, and efficient, effective standalone department in the county that's not buried underneath and in the shuffle of a bureaucracy perhaps in and through our county government. So I'm very much in favor of this. I would look forward to the changes. You are correct, there are vast amounts of flood issues, but there could be a derailment. There could be, you know, hazardous materials that leak out. We've gotta be ready and responsive, especially as we see industrial growth happening and the commerce that's happening. You know, we've got airport, two rails, we've got a port, and interstate highways with a tremendous amount of goods and services. So I think this is about time. I think it's a great evolution, and I would look forward to supporting this as it's some, you know, hearing from the other boards, and we may very well proceed down that path. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Patty. Supervisor Ding.
Thank you, Chairman. The number-one duty we have as elected officials is to protect its citizens, you know, bar none. While the activity over the last three months, we didn't, nobody died. I mean, it was traumatic. We've had, we still have problems in a camp, but with flooding, Public Works is doing their best to look at canal and so forth, but we haven't experienced anything of what we could experience. January 1 of this year, I was at the First Baptist Church with the fire chief from Lodi, waiting for resources that we were evacuating Thornton. Those residents never got to the evacuation site because there was no guidance on where they should go. I wasn't a member of the Board of Supervisors yet, I guess just a volunteer. We show up at the Arbor Mobile Home Park, and the, you know, the first thing you need on a battlefield is, "Where's the maps?" And we sat there and requested those maps day after day after day. You know, to this day, I don't know if they've ever found the maps. Those maps in the old OES in '97, which by the way is about the only thing they got right in '97, is we actually had maps and everything else was screwed up. But this has gotta be made a priority for something, you know, we don't know what's coming in June. We don't know which train is coming down the railroad tracks or down I-5. And this has to be a standalone because it should be one of our top priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Ding. All right, see nobody else in the queue? We'll open up for public comment. Anybody from the public wish to address the board on this item?
And now we'll bring it back to the board. If there's no further discussion, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to make OES a standalone committee reporting to the Board of Supervisors.
Second. All right, can I have a vote, please? All right, that is adopted 5 to 0. And counselor, with this vote automatically, direct staff are bringing back the implementation based on this discussion?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to confirm. All right, thank you. All right. Our next item, this is from my office also. Discussion of the addition of a public information specialist, public information officer to the Board of Supervisors/ Clerk of the Board Department and direct staff to bring back a plan for any implementation based on the discussion. So its recommendation is to recommend that the Board of Supervisors discuss the staffing addition of a public information specialist, the PIO, to the Board Supervisor/ Clerk of the Board Department and direct staff bring back a plan for implementation based on the discussion. Now, the reason for recommendation from my office, the Board of Supervisors is mandated by law and responsible to ensure the public trust through representative government. As a governing body of the county, the board sets county and public policy, adopts ordinances, resolutions, appropriate funds and levies, necessary fees, represents a citizen to San Wicky County in matters involving the state and federal governments, plans land use and determined zoning for the unincorporated area, represents the public on several county commissions, special district boards, and local committees, works with constituents to resolve problems and issues. Each board member serves on approximately 20 different committees. Near the end of each board meeting, open session portion, board member to provide oral reports on committees legislative and community activities. The clerk of the board attends all meetings of the Board of Supervisors, Assessment, Appeals Board, City Selection Committee, and Countywide Oversight Board, processes and retains all resultant documents, prepares imposed meeting agenda, prepares meetings minutes, maintains local appointments, lists of county boards, commissions, and committees, maintains lobbyist registration log, hearing officer panel coordinates special events on behalf of the board, such as veterans and first responders' recognitions, and provides support to all county departments. All of the aforementioned duties, responsibilities, and activities can have direct impact on the public and thus call for public engagement. The public would benefit from the addition of a public information specialist position to the Board of Supervisors/ Clerk of the Board Department as it would enhance the conveyance of information or improve timely messaging of services and activities. The position and employee in the public information specialist, public information officer classification is responsible for promoting and maintaining public relations for comprehensive programs, services, or activities of the Board of Supervisors. The incumbent represents all members of the board on non-campaign-related activities and may receive administrative direction from the clerk of the board or other higher-level staff of the office. The position may provide input regarding the public relation expectations, which includes promotion through radio, television, social media, press, press release, and information material. Fiscal impact, there is no fiscal impact associated with this discussion item. Budget items could result from any board directed staff additions and organization restructuring. And action following board approval, if review is directed by the board, county administrator, or designated department, will bring back to the board a review. All right. I brought this back, and I just read this whole thing, so I won't get too much of the discussion, but, you know, one of the main things that prompted me to is, I mean, we all sit on, you know, all these different committees, I mean, water committees, air quality, transportation, and, you know, the public health and retirement, there's a plethora of information that we have that we are not getting out to the public that, you know, that the public should know, you know, some of the things that are coming down the pipeline. You know, I mean, just for water, for example, you know, we have the tunnel fight, we have groundwater recharging, we have some of the different issues that we're dealing with, rain and stuff, and that should be pushed out to the public in a more consistent and expedited manner. I mean, I would like to see, you know, things, you know, whoever it may be is on a committee, and you have some good stuff. We talked to the PIO, the PIO pushes that out to the communities, so the community knows what this board and our county, and our county clerk is doing. You know, people talk about transparency, and this is what this PIO specialist or the public information officer would do, is to provide more transparency, more transparency of this, what's happening on the sixth floor here with their elected officials. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Supervisor Ding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a good day to bring this up after the OES, you know, reorganization, because while our first duty is to protect its citizens, our second should be keeping it informed. And not only that, but the amount of staff time and resources you save by making sure the public, it's one of their main reasons they get frustrated, is just not knowing. You know, one of the reasons I pulled those agendas items off the consent item, you know, there's so many citizens that make these comments every single day, "What are you guys doing?" You know, we've got, you know, the opioid crisis, the homeless situation, "We haven't heard anything from you guys." And while our staff is working hard, while Supervisor Canepa and Supervisor Patty have attended or set up, what, 40-something meetings already on how to deal with the homeless situation, nobody knows that. And I think it's very important that we move forward. I've just learned something yesterday, so, and to me, I'm like, "Where's my PIO?" Because I'd love, there's a lot of things I've learned, and I didn't even know we had an emergency button. We'll put that in the new onboarding thing next time, yeah. I just found out that we have district offices, I don't have one under my desk, by the way, I just looked. I just found out that the county has, don't press it. Okay, see, if you had a PIO. Anyway, I just found out yesterday, because we were dealing with the situation down in Thornton, that the county has district offices all over this county, and no one ever told me that. We've got a county office down in downtown Lodi, and I talked to the director yesterday, and she's saying, "Oh, yeah, it's eight times the size of the one in Thornton, and there's staff in there." And in the meantime, my chief of staff, Nicole Garing, has been trying to find out, or trying to figure out, "How do we put a satellite office in the north part of the county so residents don't have to call all the way down here?" And then we find out, "We already have one." Do you know how many, you know, citizens would, I mean, that's perfect for a PIO is, "Do you need help from your county staff? We're coming to you. And here's where you go if you need help with county paperwork and so forth." They're sitting there with nothing to do, because we haven't told them the resources are there. "I'm excited about doing this. This is good government," and thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Supervisor Ding. Right, see nobody, yep. Supervisor Canepa.
Thank you, Chair. So I think it's important, too, because there's a lot of positive things going on in the county. I went to the fishing derby out at Oak Grove Regional Park, and it was in my district, and then I had no clue. So it's those things that I think need to be celebrated. There's, you know, tons of events, and not just only in the district, but I think, too, that if somebody in their own district can't go, that it's important that a representative from up here can, you know, have the opportunity if they want to go and attend an event, because, I mean, it does get kind of siloed up here where, you know, everyone's worried about their own area. So I think it's important that we do celebrate the wins, and I mean, obviously celebrate the wins. So I think it's important that we do celebrate the wins and I mean, obviously celebrate the losses and get in front of it. The Dignities Alcove is a, is a perfect case of that where it's city, county, kind of both things. And then I called the mayor and got some information and then I think something like that, that you probably need to get ahead of would be like a case in point for something like this. And I talked to the mayor and they were putting in like $50,000 in relocation fees or, I don't know if it was ARPA money to help them. So I mean, people do hear it and obviously we are aware of it, but how do we get that information out? So I will be supporting this also.
Thank you Supervisor Canepa. Supervisor Patty.
Yeah, thank you Chairman. If you flashback probably exactly six years ago, I had proposed that to, to our board and your, your presentation, I'm certain is much better than mine because I was very green to, to being out here. But I recognized that we were underserved and we were not getting messages and we had no communication. And that was told to me by previous supervisors and chiefs of staff at the time. So I think this is long overdue. I would also recommend to throw in there the idea that whenever we hire somebody, we look at a countywide newsletter that's informative, that's, you know, gives phone numbers and addresses of where to contact, where to go for emergency services, information, two one one, and on and on and on, as well as lists of activities and levels of engagement that are happening from the board. So this is long overdue. It's great and I just case in point, just a couple of meetings ago, our last meeting, I had mentioned there, the Army Corps of Engineers did an open public meeting for input on the tunnel project, the proposed tunnel project. I got noticed in my office, I read the email, I went over. That's something that should have been pushed out through a PIO to every conceivable recipient in the county that could come out and speak and let people, let, let the Army Corps of Engineers know, this is a disaster unfolding. Instead, I got the email. So there's a dramatic gap in our communication that a position like this should be filled and no excuses after that. We should be able to have levels of engagement with the public as we are responsive to the public's needs. They need to know what in fact we are doing with time, resources, efforts, et cetera. So I'm very much in support of this, thank you.
All right, thanks Supervisor Patty. All right, nobody in the queue, we'll open up for the public from comment. Anybody from the public? Staring at you two.
Are you pretending there's people from the public here?
All right, hey, we gotta ask, make it bust through the door like, you know, like in wrestling. All right, seeing none, we're bringing it back to the board for discussion. There's no further discussion, I entertain a motion.
Approve the Public Information Officer, Board and Clerk of the Board.
All right, motion, second.
Second.
Got a second, vote please.
So just to be clear, on both instances that we're approving, staff's going to work on and bring back to us budget approval, finalizing the criteria of this, these, the position and new structures, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, it's adopted five to zero. All right, it is, um, almost, we're almost done here. Orders Supervisor comments and committee reports, who would like to? Supervisor Canepa.
I just want to say, last week, we went for the Chinese Asian Chamber Award Ceremony and it was very well received and the people that received awards as far as businesses and people in the community was great. And then we served food at the Cesar Chavez Anniversary Breakfast. And then another thing that a lot of people don't understand is I, I also went to the League of Women Voters, had an event at the library. And I think it's our part as leaders to go out and find the information too. If we're supposed to be expected to make educated decisions on things, then it's our job to go out and find out what people's opinions are, whether you agree or don't agree with it. So I think, I mean, it's our, our job obviously to represent everybody equally in, in the community. And I think we do that up here and I mean, we can agree and we can disagree and whatever we, we want. But I mean, ultimately, we're here to represent everybody in the community and I think that I do that. We have been really busy getting input on homelessness and yesterday we went down to Modesto and Stanislas County and saw the Salvation Army's operation down there and how they run it. We've, we've touched bases with a lot of municipalities and a lot of county offices and what the gaps are. And I think we're going to figure out a way to come back and possibly figure out how to fill those gaps. And, but yeah, we've been hard at it and I'm proud to be on that committee and at least it's, I guess we call it a listening tour because I'm learning on a daily, hourly basis. So that's kind of just a roundabout what I've been up to, so thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Canepa. Anyone else?
I'll go next.
All right, Vice Chair.
Thank you Chairman. On Saturday, we did a community cleanup at Kennedy Community Center. Want to thank Code of Sports, the Sheriff's Department, did a great job. We think we filled like four bins, got rid of a lot of garbage. Want to thank my Chief of Staff Christopher Pay for organizing it. And on Friday night, I went to Carl Ross Post and I made dinner for 100 veterans, Mexican food, and they loved it. And then on Saturday morning, Supervisor Camp and I went to go serve at the Mexican Heritage Center, which was Cedar Chavez Day, which was a great day. And then, I think that's about it. A fun weekend though, thank you.
Thank you Vice Chair. Supervisor Patty.
Thank you Chairman. I'd like to start off recognizing my Chief of Staff and Supervisor Canepa's Chief of Staff, Ms. Calder. The effort they're taking and coordinating for the meetings that we are, we're going on a pace because we are not wasting time. The humanitarian crisis of the homelessness, the impact, the devastation in so many people's lives needs to be addressed. And there's, come to find out, there's been a lot of wasted time in the last several years with a lot of inaction that the county could have been taking. So we are looking forward to, we're kind of surmising and coming forth and finding those gaps that we're going to bring back to the board for possible action moving forward. So we did a great tour yesterday and while we were in there, we also visited a what's called Volt Vocational Education Facility. It's Valley Occupational Learning and Technology Institute, industrial maintenance, mechanics, construction, training. You, you can imagine, you cannot imagine, they've got alliances with federal credit unions so that students can get easily get a low payment loans, it's deferred for the first year, $25 a month. And when they get hired by many companies, there's 100 companies that are partnered with Volt. It started off with like five and it's had such a positive impact in the community that it's got an incredible amount of buy-in. So this is something that we in the county, we talk about vocational education having a positive impact and there's little satellites of it throughout the county, you'll find. But if you want less crime, if you want less graffiti, if you want a better economy, if you want enhanced public safety, it's jobs, jobs, jobs. How do we get people to connect it to jobs? In the next 10 years, 50% of the workforce will be retired. Speak to every single company locally, they're saying, we can't find staff, we can't find that next level. These are in trades or not. So this is something that I think we as a county may want to take a deeper dive into and Volt is ready to replicate what they're doing there and bringing it here. So we as a board could discuss this. I think I'll try and agendize something in the near future and look at how we might be able to adopt this in partnership, public-private partnerships moving forward. It would be incredible. I'd also like to recognize, we had an opportunity to go to Carl Ross Post and honor Iwo Jima Commemorative on Sunday, the 19th. Supervisor Camp and I were there presenting a certificate of recognition from the entire board to Marine Corporal Frank Wright, 97 years old, one of the very few original Marine Raiders that survived the Battle of Iwo Jima. His stories, I bought his book and he's just such a delightful man to be around and he's just a real treasure for us to have. So it was an honor to be there on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. Chair Rickman, Vice Chair Villa Pudwa, Supervisor Canepa and I also attended Memorial Service for K-9, Sheriff's K-9 Duke on Wednesday, the 15th, out at the Cabral Ag Center, it was a highly attended service and a very fitting goodbye to a well-trained law enforcement dog killed in the line of duty. And I got to tell you, when they call over the radio, that last call of duty, I get choked up even now. That's for officers, even on retirement and their gratitude that public has, but also for someone killed in the line of duty, including Duke. Very touching and it was nice, nice, nice tribute and turnout, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Patty. Supervisor Ding, do you have anything?
Thank you. Now, just a couple of things we're working on, you've heard some of the public comments, I need an English class. Public comments about our election process will be putting on the agenda for next week or next board meeting. The Voter Integrity Committee, its guidelines, you know, how to restore confidence in our voting system. Perception is reality. So I think we, we all want the same thing, it's, it's how we get there. And the other reason for it is so we can separate, you know, fact from fiction. You know, what, what truly are state mandates, what aren't, what are some of the preconceived problems that maybe don't exist? But, but we're going to find out. I'd like to thank somebody, but I'm not really sure who. Nicole and I were on the way back to Lodi because my kid borrowed my car, that's another story. And 99 from the Crosstown Freeway all the way to Cherokee and Lodi is the cleanest I've ever seen. I mean, it's just, there's no garbage, it's completely clean. So I, I'm sure it's a partnership with District 10, I, I'm not really sure. And I'm sure they're going to get to the north part of the district after you get past Cherokee as you go deeper into Lodi and Turner that has now become, you know, camping central and trash all over the site. So I'm assuming they're working that direction. But maybe somebody after the meeting can tell me who actually cleaned it all up because it, it looks beautiful. I think that's all I've got, oh, three other things. Salvation Army Dinner, we went to this week. As we're doing new things and new programs, let's not forget, you know, the, the entities that are already in there that are fighting the battle every day and have been very, very successful and make sure we're funding them first. John and Gail Couch, a lot of you might know them, Ironstone Vineyards from the Lodi area released a book. Went up and, and visited them Saturday night. There's nothing better than having someone from San Joaquin County, whether it was, you know, Holt or a, a, any of our pioneers, write a book and, and tell their stories about growing up in San Joaquin County and, and, you know, where they came from. Very nice evening. And then of course, our Ag Event that we had a fundraiser, you know, and again, it just kind of reminds you of all the resources and the people in this community that have always come together to help. We do live in someplace special, so thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ding. I'll round it out here and then a couple of things, we've been very busy in South County. On the 18th, myself and Tracy Mayor Pro Tim Alucia Davis had the pleasure of attending Tracy Little's League Opening Day and throwing out the first pitch, me for baseball, her for softball. Our DA Ron Fried has joined us also. And so always a great event, it's always cool to see all the kids out there without masks, actually doing what kids do is play. Attended the, you know, was it the keynote speaker at the Gospel Center Rescue Mission graduation? And I want to say congratulations to all the graduates and thank you to the CEO David Madura and the dedicated staff for bringing all those people together. It's, if you haven't seen it, it's, it's, it's something. So congratulations. Want to give a shout out to our Assembly Member Carlos Villa Pudwa. You know, my wife and I now over there at the Capitol on the 21st, my wife was Karen, was recognized for California Women Making History Ceremony and for Carlos's Woman of the Year for this district. And my wife, she, you know, I wouldn't be here without her, you know, for her understanding and so on. But, you know, she volunteers for so many different organizations, you know, she's the president of the Women's Club or for military, for veterans and so on. So I just want to give her that recognition, say congratulations and that, you know, I love you. You guys are going to cry? I know, I know you're going to get grief from you guys for that, but it's all good. But also, we mentioned the floods and so on, the water, the rain that we've had. And I joined RD 2064, which is Dan Everson and JB of Reclamation, the Reclamation District. And Heath Flores Office and we toured the Vernalis area, which is off Airport, the levees over there. And just want to let everybody know that these levees are being patrolled 24/7 by our Reclamation District. And, you know, there is seepage out there, you know, going through and which is natural, but there is a lot of seepage. But also we're seeing boils too along some of these levees and that we're watching out for. So we have been in contact with Army Corps of Engineers and DWR and our federal and state representatives that they can assist. Our Sheriff's Department back there are doing a heck of a job out there also. And so just wanted people to know, we're out there, we're aware, we're watching and being proactive. And we talked about OES, OES is doing a fabulous job and so I want to thank all of them for that. But if you do see something and you need some information, please go to sjready.org and you can get a lot of information there. And also you can text SJSTORMS to 888-777 to opt in to receive updates from San Joaquin County related to current and future storms. If anybody mentioned, I know myself, Supervisor Canepa and Villa Pudwa attended the Central Valley Asian American Chamber of Commerce, the CEVAC 2023 Community Recognition Award Dinner. Congratulations to all the recipients. I was trying to get more pictures, but Cannabis Supervisor Canepa head was right in front of my camera the whole entire time. I gotta give you about time dude. Also, Amazon and Tracy off of Grantline Road had their grand opening a couple of days ago. This new facility is over 3 million square feet and will be delivering packages within, you know, 24 hours. So welcome to Tracy and San Joaquin County. You know, I know when I was mayor, you know, we approved it and pushed it forward. And it's, at that time, it's one of the biggest facilities in the city of Tracy, so it's just phenomenal. You have a chance, go check it out. And, you know, I'm going to leave it at that, I know there's a lot more, but we got other business that we got to attend to. So before we adjourn our closed session, Counselor, are we expected to come back for now? All right, with that then, we will adjourn this meeting to Tuesday, April 11th, 2023 at 9:00 AM. Thank you everybody, and look at that, we haven't had a 12, 12:22, I wanted to get out of here by noon, but we're done. You guys want to, what do you?